Come to order, please rise for the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we get started with our meeting, oops, come on, Wednesday. Are there any comments or statements from the public? As you are it. Onto the informational agenda budget process.
Just a couple of questions that were brought up at the last school committee meeting. One was in terms of the budget process itself. And I do realize that we have both a budget subcommittee and the committee as a whole to make decisions for the school committee. I do have a concern that this year we went in a different direction to start with. And I want to make sure people understand that I'm looking for the school committee to provide input before we go to the town. So I'm hoping that tonight, you know, the budget subcommittee meeting asked that we go back to the principals, to the teachers, to the school advisory councils and pare down or to take a look at what our requests were and we take it out of other parts of the budget. The principals, the administration as a whole did that. And that was what we were bringing to you at the last school committee meeting. I realize it wasn't in the format that, you know, Mr. Sullivan wanted to see in terms of all the line items put together. We have done that at this point. They're even highlighted in color so that you can find them. But my hope is that today, we can hear from the school committee whether that work that the administrators have done, is that what you want to see in the budget? Do you want to see other pieces out, other pieces in? So that we can move on with the process and send it to FinCom and the town and say, here's what we as a school system would like to see in front of the town. And it does not mean that we cannot make changes to it. I mean, you do have a scheduled hearing in March as part of one of the school committee meetings, is a budget hearing. And at that budget hearing, you're supposed to listen to the community as a whole if they come and they express their, you know, we like this, we don't want that, can you take this out, can you add that in? Even at that date, you can still make changes to the budget. And then after that date is when I would see a school committee take a vote and say, this is what we want to send to the town. But I've seen even on town floor where you still have the opportunity usually to make amendments, usually are, you know, well planned in advance. But, you know, the budget doesn't just get set at one point in time. It gets set at town meeting and in between now and then, we still have time to do this. So I'm hoping we can do that so we can get it into the format, any changes up, down, sideways, which you would want to see.
Any comments on this at all?
Budget process?
Yeah.
Yes. I had asked that that be put on the agenda, so I appreciate the opportunity to discuss what we have set up as a budget process. And I'd refer you all to the memorandum that was communication between the town and Dr. Colley and then Dr. Colley to us as a school committee. And that had to do with the scheduling that he just addressed. In this schedule, the process clearly indicates what the steps are. And just to again review the process, I've got a check mark down here on the January fiscal year fourteen school budget timeline, okay, which is put together by the superintendent. And in January was our target. As Dr. Colley indicated, superintendent meets with administrators to bring consensus and budget options to school committee. So we're at that point now. The next block calls for school committee chooses budget option strategies to present to the board of selectmen, FinCom. The person group responsible column indicates the budget subcommittee and school committee. We've made reference to the budget subcommittee. We were not able to have a meeting last week due to free schedules that didn't coincide. So I highlight that the budget subcommittee has been assigned the task of reviewing the budget and coming forward to the school committee with their consensus options for further discussion. Certainly, it's not a finished budget and yes, it will change. Each change in the budget from this point forward has a new title. After the school committee sets the budget hearing, that's with a document that is called the school committee budget. And that comes after what we have here this evening. It does indicate we're behind a little bit. There's been some snowstorms and things and certainly understood, but I just wanted to confirm that that's my understanding of the process. We reviewed it in the budget subcommittee meeting and that that's where we're at still. Because yes, there's other steps and certainly they go forward. Now, the budget subcommittee had a discussion on the key piece of the presentation of the budget and the budget document. Typically, the budget document is not just what we have before us this evening. It includes charts, graphs, revenue, which is not in the current document. Revolving accounts, accounting typically should be in that budget document. And so we discussed that in the subcommittee. We had an extended conversation although no vote was taken because we felt we were meeting another time. And that was who would be making the presentation to FinCom. That was an open discussion and there were various suggestions. And I would suggest that the two pieces that we have is the actual presentation, which includes the second piece of who's making it. And that was the discussion of the subcommittee, which is part of the process that we've committed to this year.
Need anything else? No. You kind of, you look like you-
Yeah, I- I don't know where I want to start.
You kind of keep going like-
Keep- I understand where Michael's coming from. The only piece is actually the next part of the agenda that, you know, I think we should accept a budget from Dr. Colley as he has met with his teams and what they need, this and that. We know it's going to be fluid, it's going to go up and down as we have the open meeting. It might be aligned with Michael to accept the budget that he's accepted to us, presented to us today. The only question I want before I do any of that is, we had mentioned transportation and also fees of students and I know it's coming up next. I would like to know that piece before I say, let's work with this budget. This will be our working document and go forward from there because I would like to see some fees come down and that may make decisions on what we-
Do you want to touch on that now?
Yeah, just as part of the process itself. Last week, many of my staff were out on vacation as well as myself. So there was no way for me to sit with the staff and actually run the numbers. But I feel comfortable and that's why we left it to Wednesday so that I could meet with them today. I've given them each, you know, go look at this number, go look at that number. But I feel comfortable that we can reduce the fees anywhere between twenty to thirty percent. Use some of the revolving account balances that we've carried. We may have to transfer between some of the accounts if that is possible. But overall, I do not expect that those would impact this budget. It would simply impact the revolving account balances as we go into the future. The balances would reduce themselves over time. And if things happen like, you know, the only one I'm worried about is the lunch account, which we can talk about, but I have that scheduled for Wednesday when I would have had enough time to put it together, but I didn't expect another meeting, so.
Well, because we did tell parents if we ever not needed the budget, you know, the monies, we return it back to them or eliminate them. So that's my only concern on the budget right now.
But that's on the agenda for next, for Wednesday?
For Wednesday.
For Wednesday.
It's sort of, it's, well, because he wanted to meet with the staff and it's-
No, we're here.
Well, I thought it was part of this with the revolving account on the item B, so-
No, this was actually a request that Michael had made.
For the audit. Okay.
Why don't we move to heartbeat so that we can just keep going and get to the budget stuff anyway? Revolving account audit. Michael, since you asked to put that, do you want to open up discussion on that?
Yeah, the same, I had an opportunity to meet with staff here at the school and also the municipal side, the accounting department. We have a charge that we pay for the municipal audit on an annual basis. And it's very limiting in that it reviews the accounting on the municipal side. In other words, any documents that get forwarded to the treasurer's office and the accounting department is what's audited in that process. It's strongly recommended, if not a requirement that an internal third party audit be done on a regular basis. And that's what I brought up last week at the regular meeting. And at this special meeting, it certainly, I hope that explains the difference between the municipal and the school department audit. But also, it is in fact the foundation for creating an accurate budget for FY14. The current document is still missing some pieces, whether it be considered the presentation or the numbers itself. As far as the presentation, the subcommittee asked for student enrollment projections. That was a discussion in our last subcommittee meeting. I don't really understand if we do not have student projections for next year, how we as a school committee can analyze a budget. And that was pretty clear in our subcommittee meeting. So that's part of the process. But more importantly is the audit. So to give you a better understanding, let me just read my summary. After reviewing the activities of Title I grant, athletic revolving accounts, athletic fees and activity fees and miscellaneous revolving accounts, such as I believe we have a pre-K revolving account and after looking at those at year end, June 30th, 2012, after my review of the activities on those accounts for the purpose of reviewing journal entries and diverted expenditures from the school department's general operating budget to specific grant and revolving accounts. There's a difference between the way the town looks at our procedure and their checks and balances they have in place. So under the town's current operating procedure, when invoices are charged directly to special revenue funds, they're subject to review by their accountant's office prior to the payment of the bill. The system provides for internal controls, invoices that are costs that are eligible to be charged to particular special revenue or revolving or granted account, grant accounts. When the school department's responsible for its own operating budget as we are, there's limited oversight from the municipal treasurer and accountant's accounting office. So we as a school committee have the authority to, and the school department, to make entries in the ledger system without providing the support documents to the treasurer's office to review and approve. So during, the process that we follow and to date have followed is we make our transfers during 2012, in this case, to reclassify expenditures from the general fund to certain special revenue accounts. It's common in school departments throughout Massachusetts and we're given an opportunity to charge expenditures and we tend to do it towards the end of the year. If, but we have the option of charging them throughout the fiscal year. In no way is there any indication that there's misuse of funds. However, it would add to the consistency of transparent process and would not result in the questions and the discussion we've had recently on very large balances. So that was part of the process that definitely has to be looked at. The internal review of the financial systems. And that's actually is appropriate to our next discussion on the budget because without those in place, we really have difficulty now knowing what our starting point is because of the the dollars that sit in revolving accounts and so that would address that.
Dr. Colley?
Just a couple of things and perhaps it's more to familiarize people with the procedures on the school side. It is true that the town has limited review capabilities of the internal procedures of the school. However, it doesn't mean they're not already in place. So for example, when we talk about the accountant down at town offices reviewing the expenditures on the town side, we have our own procedures. So for example, when a bill comes in, the person responsible for that bill, generating the bill, has to agree that yes, it's an appropriate expense. Yes, there has been a PO put in place. Yes, the service or material has been delivered in good form. It goes to our offices where our accountant, Melissa, looks at it. Again, verifies that the money's in the account, that the PO was made, that the expenses are correct expense, that the supervisor has already looked at the expense and has approved it. From that point, it goes to me who then again, I look over that to make sure that all the pieces have been put in place. And then all that supporting document does go to town. They may not look at it, but they do get it. And every warrant when you, school committee signs it, you do sign a small summary form. But underneath that summary form is a book of boatload of information, including all the invoices, all the people who reviewed them, all the people who sign off on them, the account numbers are in there. And if there's any discrepancies, we actually put a note or a memo in there to show the town accountants and the auditors who do look at those and say, here's what we're doing if it wasn't done correctly. So for example, if somebody happened to be at a conference and they wanted to buy some books and they couldn't access the PO system, but they wanted to get the books and it's at a discount because you're at a conference, they call me, send me an email, I approve it on the email immediately upon return. They write the PO before they even can do it and I send an email back saying, yes, it's allowed. I've already checked with Melissa to make sure the numbers, the monies are there. So there are procedures in place and the auditors do look at those procedures to make sure that they are in place. For the revolving account, it's no different. Historically revolving accounts, as long as the expenditures are related to the purpose of the revolving account, you can assign some of the cost to the revolving account. And if your budget also has additional funds, you can use the funds from the budget as well. So many of our revolving accounts were in fact created to offset what otherwise would have been a straight expense out of your regular budget. So if you take for example, the preschool account, you have teachers, you have TAs, you have secretaries, you have materials, you have the principal. In part, all of them provide a service to the preschool for which we charge some amount of tuition. That tuition obviously could be as high as it needs to be in order to take care of all those needs. But if it does not, then you're left with having to use your regular budget to supplement that revolving account or those tuitions. And that has historically been the case here. In some accounts, yes, we have been able to build up over the years a running balance. And that is what was suggesting that we use to reduce some of these fees when the time comes, but not for all accounts. And again, there's, the only way to get to some of these accounts if you want to reduce the the balance to the point where now the account may go into deficit because we're not making enough revenue by reducing the fees, you may have to supplement from the budget. And you may be able to supplement for the budget in some areas. Or you may be able to shift the cost of a part of the budget to one of the other revenue accounts or revolving accounts that has a bigger balance in order to balance the budget. That's why I was saying that I did not see any changes to the fees, which I've heard a couple of times already that people want to make, that it could be done with just the balances in the revolving account and that the net effect on the operating budget of the system may be left alone or untouched. Obviously, we could go and put more expenses onto the revolving account and reduce even further the regular budget, the operating budget. It just, it scares me when for those particular revolving account purposes, if we have no balances, if there's an issue in those areas, then they would be unexpected and we would have to then dip into a budget that's already tight to pay off those things in the next fiscal year, so.
This might be a question through the chair to Mike. If I can understand the gist of everything you said, instead of waiting till the end of the year to do all the expenditures and write out all the checks and-
Transfer line items.
If we do it throughout the year, we can at least have a starting balance right now of what we're going to be looking at at FY14. To where we don't know that if we set a budget right now, we come to find out, we do the audit of the accounts and lower fees and that, we may be behind the eight ball before we even start off or be ahead. Is that what you were getting at?
I think it's a very appropriate question for me to address that piece. It may make sense as we go into the FY14 introduction to again recognize that you are correct, it starts tonight. What I'm suggesting is our looking at, at next year's revolving accounts starts tonight, that our budget document should include the three year history of all accounts, including revolving accounts. It should contain revenues, expenses, staffing, certainly projected enrollments. They're all part of this presentation. So for us to sit here tonight and look at a budget that has no enrollment figures-
Mike, can you, can you address though, because I-
I think he's, I'm understanding a little bit more now what he said.
I thought I was addressing it and I will with simply saying if we're starting without knowing what our starting amount is on revolving accounts, we're really not looking at an accurate budget. We need to know, if in fact we're by policy going to set all revolving accounts other than the school account and any transportation accounts, start them out at zero, then that would be a starting point, okay? But right now, we just have a unknown and that's based on standard practices and that's what we should be looking at. I don't, I didn't see it.
Dr. Colley?
The revolving account information that is provided to you every month has the balances, the expenditures and the revenues brought in up to that point beginning in the fiscal year. And it usually has in the front of it or somewhere, I forget where we put it in the Excel sheet. It has the accumulated forward balance from that account from previous years. If you want to do a three year history on a revolving account, you have to pick a date certain on which every year you are going to pick that date as your accounting date, which can be anything on a revolving account because that's the idea behind a revolving account. It's like your checking account. If you compare every year and, you know, December 31st to see how you did one year to the next and you open up your checking account, how much money did you bring into your checking account or how much money you paid out? I guess you can compare year to year. But obviously, there's still going to be some bills that are outstanding and there may be some payments that you're due that haven't come in yet. And that's, so if you say, hey, we want to look at the history of the revolving accounts for the last three years on June 30th or September 1st or middle of the year, we can pick a date and do that analysis. It may be helpful, it may not be because the balances jump up and down year to year depending on what date you set as a cutoff date. Because some payments may still be missing and some expenses may not have been paid. So you may be looking on that particular day at a huge amount of money left in the account where in reality it's just we didn't get the bills, for example, for, you know, the kids going to sectionals on baseball because it was like at the end of June. So that's what you need to understand. If we do it that way, we can. But the revolving account that you get every month has the running balance in it.
Tom?
Through the chair, Mr. Sullivan. Are you asking that we have the revolving accounts audited by an outside party? Is that what you're asking?
And we can.
Two different situations that, we've left that discussion. The, yes, I have requested that we audit not just the revolving accounts, that we do an internal audit of the school department, which is not what a municipal audit was, okay? We haven't been doing it. The answer to that previously was that we do a municipal audit. We do not do an internal, as Dr. Colley, who's as of July 1st, 2012, has become our certified business manager. So he should know the requirements of a, of an audit and we need an internal audit. And I brought that up at the last meeting. And so what I'm discussing now that we're into this budget section is as we have a line item for athletic coaches and assistant coaches of $51,400, what's missing is the additional amount budgeted out of the revolving account. So no, I'm not talking about the audits now, I'm talking about this budget document. And due to the incomplete nature, I don't know where we're going to get the money. And that's where the explanation from the fees and things would show that the addition to the 51,400, or maybe I'm wrong, does that include the revolving accounts? Because there's no revenue figures looking at here. But that's what's missing in this, in this document as of now. We're talking about this document.
No, the revolving account- No, the revolving account, you carry usually about anywhere between $87,000 and $100,000 worth of revenue, and you have about 80 to 90-plus expenses. So you have some years a little under, but right now, we have a forward balance of $18,000 as of the end of.
That doesn't address what I was trying to point out, and I can wait till we get to that section, because that has nothing to do with what I just pointed out. We've got, committed here $51,400 to our athletic coaches and assistant coaches.
And my point is.
And that is out of the operating budget.
Right.
And you came up with that figure based on looking to receive out of the revolving account a certain amount of money.
Not for those coaches.
Okay. So none of the fees go for coaches?
Some of the fees may end up going for coaches, yes, especially when we have sports that we had in the middle of the year that we haven't accounted for. Like, for example, we had the boys' freshman basketball. So since we hadn't put that into the regular budget, they raised money, they, you know, we used their fees to pay for the coach.
Yeah, no, I think I've explained it. I think everyone understands that we're going to be spending a certain amount of money in athletics department. If some of it's coming out of revolving accounts and/or hot dog sales and cash handling, that all gets put into this document, and it's not there now.
My understanding is the revolving accounts are separate, and they're, as you described, they're like checking accounts. Money comes in, money goes out, the budget is the budget, and the budget supplements the athletic budget. The revenue sometimes offsets it, but usually it's not 100% offset. Usually, the budget is backfilling what's going on in those revolving accounts.
Yes.
My first point. My second point is, we do get the revolving account balances every month. They get presented, there's the starting balance, there's the expenses, there's the revenues, there's the ending balance. I look at them every month, he talks about them every month, I see them every month. This is not something that doesn't happen on a monthly basis, and we don't know what the balances are. They get presented every month, at least I hear them and see them on paper. With regard to audits, don't we get audited by the Department of Ed in Massachusetts? Don't they look at our budgets?
They look at our end-of-the-year report, and they look at the audit that the town does of all the finances, including ours. There are, you know, a lot of districts do this from time to time. It's not a required, those are the required ones. But a lot of districts will hire somebody like the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials. They have a team that does budget audits, and they do financial audits of your operations. So that's why I was saying, yeah, we can do this. And we can limit it to say, hey, we just want you to come in and look at the revolving accounts. We want to make sure we have, you know, enough procedures and safeguards in place that, you know, people can feel comfortable about what we're spending the money on, that the income is going towards supposed to be going, and that we have the procedures in place to safeguard those monies. We can do that, it's just an additional expense.
At what cost? Is going to be my question.
They usually look at the size of the district, the size of the operations, and then they give you a scale. I guess it'd be about $5,000.
Tony.
As far as the revolving accounts, if you look at them, and we do get presented, you know, we do have them presented to us. So you can't, and if you want any more detail, all you got to do is go sit down with Melissa and she'll explain it to you. But if one of these balances has, you know, if one of these accounts, the balance is higher than what we would like, that's, you know, that's our job to change that fee structure to lower that balance. It's, I mean, I don't understand why there's an issue. If you look at most of these accounts, they're very little, and they'll all be spent down if they're not already in the negative.
Eric, did you have your hand up?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Can we move to that? We'll move to the action agenda, because that's kind of where.
I thought we already had.
No, we actually hadn't, and that's where the conversation is.
No, you did announce we're moving on.
I did, to the revolving account audit.
No, and then you went into the budget, and the question was about how the revolving accounts.
Did I go into the budget yet?
No.
I didn't think so. I'll do it now, though. So now, I didn't think I did, maybe I did accidentally, or maybe it sounded like I did. I didn't officially.
No, actually, as it will indicate, Ms. Larabee asked a question about revolving accounts after we closed the revolving account, after we closed the audit question.
Can I go back a little bit? Do they do have a question now?
If you have a question on, yeah, on the revolving.
The revolving account audits. My past practice, military-wise, anytime there's a change of command or anytime a new superintendent renews a contract, whatever, if we're going to do internal audits, that's the time, if I was coming in and taking over a command of whatever it was, I would want to know what I was left with from the prior person. It happened to be the same person. We should start doing that precedent in school committees forward to where whenever there's a changeover, do an audit, make sure that everything's fine, that the other guy goes out, a new male, female comes in, and we start afresh. That's when we should be doing internal audits. We haven't done one in four years, it may be time to.
Was one done?
We've never had one since I've been here on internal audit.
We've done them in specific departments, like we did the one on special ed, we did the one on the transportation, we did the one on lunch program. So we haven't done the whole enchilada in one shot, which we could. That'd be more of a business office, business practice audit. And I'd be, like I said, I'd be more than happy to shave money somewhere to try to put it into either this year's budget or next year's budget.
It protects everybody. It protects the outgoing, it protects the incoming, it protects everybody that.
I don't know that any of us were here when.
I was, when he was here.
When he was hired?
Yeah.
Oh, so you, when you were just around that time.
And we didn't have, we didn't do a.
No.
We didn't do an audit from outgoing to incoming superintendents.
No.
All right, can we move to the.
Which would be smart to do in the future, just to lay that out there.
Move to the action agenda, Karen. FY14 budget, which has sort of intermingled into the revolving account, as it should, because there is intertwining of them. Dr. Colley, do you want to start it, and then we'll continue the discussion?
At the last school committee meeting, I brought to the table the list of priorities that, after meeting with the administrators, we felt we could actually work into the budget. There was even one small adjustment that we made after we looked at the monies in terms of the library media specialist. The person going out of that position was a much higher-paid staff person than the person that ended up in the position even a half-time. So I was calculating out the full salary of the previous person, but that had not changed.
What are you working off as, so I can follow you? Is it any of these that are on our agenda?
It's basically if you, if you want to go to.
I just want to follow you along.
If you want to go back to Wes.
Okay.
Actually, it's under media, sorry.
It's under what, sorry?
Media.
Media, okay, got it.
You just clicked the spreadsheet for media.
Yeah.
Right.
All set.
Each of the schools had, at least elementary, middle, and high, had a pocket of money for the library media specialist. The person that was there in the position last year before we cut it to .6, the person that was there was very expensive. When we make the cut, we cut based on that person's salary, thinking that the person would stay. The person chose, the person did not stay. We hired somebody else in that position that's lower. I was still calculating on the previous person increase if we were going to bump it back up to full-time. So I was expecting a larger number in order to increase next year's budget to pay for that additional amount of time. Found out we didn't need as much. So what I wanted to start with is to say, at the last school committee meeting, you saw that I was suggesting we would need about $800,700 for an increase of 5.27%. We're reducing that line, or the request for that line to be increased, so that the total increase of the budget now would be 777, 700, or a 5.1 increase. So that's the only change. Other than that, what was presented at the last school committee meeting has been integrated into the big spreadsheet budget that you have. Any changes, we highlighted so that you could find them easily. So if you have any questions.
Dr. Colley, are we required by law to have a media specialist at a certain degree level? Like, I thought about two years ago, we had parent volunteers that wanted to do it at most of the schools.
They are, if you run it as a media program, you would have to run it as a, basically, certified staff person.
Is it a master's level?
Yep, it's a recognized position by the state and department that needs a certificate.
And what are we running currently as? Are we running it as that program to run?
Yes, yeah, but only in a part-time basis at the elementary school, high school, and middle school, run as a, you know, you want to make sure that you have somebody that can take care of the students in that area of library and media and computers and technology, not necessarily without the assistance of other people. What we had previously in some of the schools was paraprofessionals that would help, but the teacher had to go with them. You know, as a teacher, you can just drop off the kids and walk out. Whereas with library media specialists who are fully certified staff members, you can have the teachers drop off or work together with that person on projects around research or technology or presentations or stuff like that.
Anything? I know, I've had a chance to take a look at this. It's very similar to what we saw last week, it's just in a slightly different format. And again, the breakdown, $416,000 of the 777 is.
What we had last week didn't have, over a million dollars in the budget, so.
No, it didn't. It was 804,000, I think.
Eight hundred.
And this is 777.
From 151 to 159.
The budget wasn't, the footnotes brought it down to that, but the budget has changed over. This document that we, as of last meeting, read over a million dollars. So it is a significant change. This has the changes put into it. Thank you.
That I'll give you, but the papers that we saw that Tony's looking at is what I was referencing, not that document. $416,000 is the contractual sep plans, is that correct?
Something like that.
416? Carolina?
How much is increased special ed requirements?
Special ed requirements, along with ELL, because those regulations have also changed, it's about 130, 129, 700. I do, and perhaps Mike is alluding to, there are some changes within each of the department budgets, because the administrators also, what I presented last week was just straight increases, that the administrators couldn't find a way to fit within their budget. There are a few changes in each of the budgets where administrators said, well, I need a little bit more money on supplies, I'll take it out of here and move it around. So each one of the budgets has a sheet that explains those changes from each of the administrators as well. But yeah, the special ed is the 129, 700. There is still the possibility of that out-of-district placement, that would be an additional
In addition, above and beyond, or that's in here?
Above and beyond the 129, 700. So if you put them all together.
Michael?
I just have to speak up.
Yeah, no, I do have a question, just, I guess it's more point of information for me, where we are in this process. Are we going to go line by line? Are we, you know, what are we going to do here? We're now looking at this document. We've had a question about two different areas and different areas of the document. Is that what we're going to do?
Well, I, I'll speak for myself personally. I did sit down with the document and I went line by line. I think now is the opportunity to bring up any questions that you might have.
Right, but shouldn't we, does anyone have any questions on the superintendent business office budget, yes or no?
We can do it that way if you like, that's fine.
Well, I just don't want to have a ask, Eric, where we're at, or COVID.
That'll break it down a little bit.
I can leave my question until transportation.
Okay. So start with the FY14 superintendent administrative budget. Are there any questions on this particular?
Yes.
Tony?
Dr. Colley, page one, special ed salaries and transportation sped expenses.
Tony, can you just reference where you're looking at?
Page one, the very first page.
And that's on the FY14 superintendent education budget?
Okay. Halfway down on the bottom, the special ed salaries is up 12%. Transportation sped expenses up 14%.
Are you doing this page?
Yes.
Okay. Special ed, I guess I'm doing.
Well, these are the totals.
Yeah, those are the totals.
Which get broken down as we go.
Which one are you concerned with?
You want to wait till it gets to that point, to special ed?
Well, the education salaries, is that, that increase, is that the director?
The sped salary you're talking about?
Yes.
That is, that is a big part of it. There's also the summer school program, and there's also the additional teachers that the principals had asked about, special ed part-time, and one at the middle school.
Are we projecting a savings at all, Dr. Colley, with having a new person come in next year, FY14?
To be honest, I have asked other superintendents who find themselves in the same position that I am, and they're all offering over $100,000.
For the same-sized districts?
The only ones that I know that are looking right now, no, actually, they're all, well, no, one of them's as big as ours. So I wasn't suggesting a change in that.
Okay, I'm just curious. I know that's how we usually save some monies with bringing new people in.
Okay, that's kind of an overview, so let's go to the districts specifically.
Michelle, can we just have whoever's going to speak on it say where they're speaking from?
Sure.
So we can get right to it.
Any questions on the FY14 superintendent admin budget? Or comments or suggestions, thoughts?
Dr. Colley, on the bottom, line 58.
What page are you on, Tony?
Same one. I don't have a page two.
Yeah.
Page two.
Not online, I don't have one.
I do.
It's the next page.
Okay.
After one.
I didn't have two of them, but that's okay.
Line 58 through 64, Dr. Colley.
Professional development.
Yeah, and we had that in 1112, there's nothing showing for 910, 1011, nothing proposed.
We didn't have any money in those years, in those accounts. The only reason why you have it there and are expended is if you remember last year, we transferred some end-of-the-year monies into curriculum development, so it shows up as an expenditure.
There's nothing showing for nine, ten, ten, eleven, nothing proposed.
We didn't have any money in those years, in those accounts. The only reason why you have it there and now expended is if you remember last year, we transferred some end-of-the-year monies into curriculum development. So it shows up as an expenditure. Again, you know, not wanting to add additional costs to the budget. I'm thinking if we can't get it out of grants and there's no leftover monies next year in terms of maybe hiring savings that we may have, then we will do very little in professional development, we'll just do whatever we have in other lines. There is a little bit of money built in every year into specific grants. Title two, title one have some requirements for professional development in them. Usually, once that money is, is used up, then we, that counts how much we plan to do in terms of professional development. Unless we get a year where we have additional savings.
Dr. Colley, any of this professional development money responsive classroom?
Some of it was that year. I believe like ten percent.
It's not, there's nothing proposed.
Well, it's only eleven, twelve.
Okay, alright.
Two, twelve.
That's why I say it was that year.
Fourteen is empty. Michael?
Yeah, well, once again, this, this points to the weakness in this format. We have some obligations for professional development next year. We're not budgeting for it. And that's why I, again, urge that there should be some account, some, some budgetary numbers from grants that we're projecting, we're going to file for in this figure. Because otherwise, we have a budget before us that, that doesn't meet our professional development obligations.
Carolina?
I believe that...
And I understand that it can be, excuse me, I'll, if I could finish.
Go ahead.
I'm not comfortable addressing it through, well, we'll end up with some surpluses and we'll do transfers afterwards. That, that's not how you start your budget. So I, I, I believe that, that's a very good indication of the concern that I've been expressing.
Carolina?
I think in other parts of the budget, there is professional development monies that have been allocated. I think that was specifically for this curriculum development item. I think professional development is in other areas, not just curriculum development. So I don't think because he zeroed that area out, that means there is no professional development. I think if, if you look through the budget, there are professional development categories that are filled with budgetary items. I reviewed the budget, so I know that.
Mine's ninety-six and ninety-seven, actually, specifically have some for admin as well, so.
But of these curriculum developments that we had last year, they, they were multi-phase. Last year was phase one of a lot of this professional development. So if we're going to put it somewhere else, I, I think it's a valid question that another member brought forward. Where'd it go?
It was two eleven, two twelve, two years ago.
And that is what I'm asking.
If you take a look, each of the buildings has a small professional development line. That is what historically has been allocated to the buildings, which is nowhere near as enough to do some of the work that we've done in the last few years. But that, again, is because we had savings, because again, the alternative would be to add thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to the budget in order to provide the same level of staff development that we had in a year where we had additional funding. There is a little bit of professional development, again, if you go to the curriculum, professional development other, you have four thousand dollars, five hundred over there. You do have professional, I'm way back on page twenty-four of the curriculum budget.
Oh, you're jumping.
Yeah, I'm just saying, each of the buildings has a little bit. And then if you go to curriculum, the curriculum section, you do have professional development substitutes. There's about seven thousand dollars in there. You do have professional development other, there's about four, forty-five hundred in there. You do have contractual, contracted services. There's a little bit of professional development in there.
That's listed under the curriculum tab.
So on that tab.
We're still in, you're, you're just pointing it out, there is.
That there is other smaller pieces, but that big chunk of money that we spent on that one year, the reason why it appears there, because that was a year that we had monies to put towards professional development.
Dr. Colley, two other lines. Textbooks new.
What page?
And replacement. District, district?
What page?
I got to get back to it here, one second here.
Page three on the bottom, new textbooks.
And are those in addition to what we, I thought we approved some monies just recently, past month or so, by textbooks, is that on top of?
They will show up next year under the, the expended FY thirteen. So if you take a look, FY ten, we didn't spend any, because we didn't allocate any monies there. And FY eleven, we spent about ninety-three thousand. FY twelve, we spent about a hundred and twenty. Now, for this year, we had thirteen thousand budgeted. So that's probably just about what was budgeted on those other years, just when we had additional savings, like we asked you for some of those savings to be transferred into these accounts. That thirteen at the end of the year, or next Wednesday, when we go through the transfers, will show up in that line.
And sub-callers, line twenty. Twenty through twenty-four, all different, I thought we went to a system where it was automated, where we not have a person sitting there dialing numbers?
We did, and that's being transferred out for next year. That's why, yeah, that's one of the transfers you'll see.
Okay.
There's no balance in there, no.
Well, that's why, we're projecting zero for next year, because we transferred it out.
On to the MAC. I'm sorry, business office. It was moving on here. Any questions?
Should we, back up, Dr. Colley, the, the district, the backup sheet?
Those are, those are changes that we're suggesting.
Quickly explain the two columns of numbers there.
The, the one column is what was, the one way over and dark is the total amount of that series of accounts. So where you had school committee contracted services, forty-one hundred. Then underneath it breaks it down, three thousand for arbitration, one thousand for printing the town report, a hundred for community relations. That's how those lines work.
So these three numbers add up to that number.
And by the way, the town does charges for their audit. Just thought I'd say it.
We're, I'm right here on page six, right where you are?
Page six, okay, alright, line, number, line thirty-three, Dr. Colley. Business office? Line thirty-three? Line thirty-three, right in the middle?
Yep, human resources, that's one of the lines that, if you look back at the requested increases, one was to increase the human resources person. And what we did is, we, we took money, so for example, from the sub-call lines to this person, because this is the person that now handles just about all the subs.
Oh, that's here, okay.
Right, so what we did is we transferred money into that account, or we're suggesting that we transfer money into that account. So it doesn't reflect as an increase, it's coming out of other lines.
What line was that?
Thirty-three, twenty-six.
That's the, the point six to the full-time.
Yeah, if you see it, it was thirty-seven, thirty-one, twenty-two, nineteen.
No, I just didn't see that. No, I, I realized that, I didn't know that decision was made.
Anything else on the?
Well, if I can go back to, to what you just said, Dr. Colley. The prior year, the nineteen thousand, one ninety. My understanding is, did you just say we're transferring into that for this current year as well?
Yes.
So the decision has been made. So, so we're basing this, this increase to thirty-five won't actually be an increase to thirty-five, because we're going to have an adjustment to the FY thirteen number, is that what you're saying?
There would be, there would be an adjustment for the remainder of this year, if you approve the transfer that you will see on Wednesday.
That'll be Wednesday.
Okay.
Based on the transfer.
On Wednesday, okay. That's what I was saying, so it'll be Wednesday. No, actually, I like it this week.
Yeah, I just asked him that.
I'm good.
The, the...
I have it at home.
Oh. That is one of those areas that we shopped around within the superintendent's lines and said, you know, who are the people, for example, today, she did a whole analysis of the teachers who still need to turn in some stuff to the DESE to get their recertifications, going from initial to professional. We haven't had that level of review or help in the office for years. And some of the stuff that she's cleaning up, you know, if, if we don't have her full-time, we won't be able to do that kind of thing. She just found like seventeen issues with the, the seniority list for Ask Me, for example, which we needed to go into negotiations. So it's the kind of person we need.
Onto MAC?
Well, if, if, before we leave this one, if we're going to start analyzing needs within the superintendent and business office, for next year, I suggest we, we have a, I like the idea of restructuring, and I believe we need a, a business manager in, separate from the superintendent in our, and I think that would alleviate the strains on the... Yeah, there's already four or five personnel here. But Dr. Colley being stretched into the two positions, I don't think works as seamlessly as, as was hoped. So, so I would like to see, within the salary positions under the business office, new line item for a, for a part-time business manager.
Michael, what's talking about a human resource personnel?
No, we're talking.
We're talking about the superintendent.
Rather than doing that, doing something else.
I know, but that line item was.
But he's, he's, he was just still talking about this section of the budget, just suggesting that.
It goes on that page.
Having one person doing those two dots is just not as efficient. Carolina?
So if, if you were to be able to find a part-time business manager?
Well, I think, if we could, I thought we're just adding our individual comments.
We are, I think she's just adding, she's asking a question, basing.
She added her comment.
I, I, I don't think tonight we're, we're finalizing our recommendations or listing.
No, I'm not suggesting we are, but she has a question, so. Go ahead.
Dr. Colley, if we were to add either a full-time or a part-time business manager, what would the salary range be that you would be looking at to fill a position like that?
Actually, if I could address that?
I just asked a question of the superintendent.
Because it would be the school committee's decision to hire a business manager. We have the appointing authority, we would look at.
We do, and we would, we would be setting the salary, you're correct. We would set the salary, but she's asking, I, I know, I certainly am not one to be checking in the newspapers to see what the business managers have been making recently. I would think he has a better idea than I do.
Yeah, but I, I don't think we need to analyze every suggestion we come up with here.
At this point, I think it's just a question. Dr. Colley?
Back at the office, I have an analysis of all the administrative positions across the state from which I can pull a salary ballpark, if that's what you're thinking of.
So you don't know off the top of your head?
No, they usually are central office positions. Depending on the title and qualifications, they go anywhere from superintendent to business manager or school business official, as they now want everybody to be called. So we're talking, I don't know, if full-time, eighty to a hundred and twenty?
So.
Depending on the size of the district.
Forty to sixty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, if I could just add, my suggestion was to create a position.
I understand.
Okay? And I also added that comment after we talked about restructuring the business office. I believe that it, that, that much of that expense would come from existing allocations. I'm, I'm not the type that just wants to add things on top of last year's budget.
I understand that, but regardless.
I believe you need a certified business manager, the cost of which partially would come, because that seems to be a question on the floor, partially would come from existing allocations.
Sure.
And secondly, there, there may be some additional amounts. But we, as a school committee, would look at that if we agreed with that suggestion.
I understand, and if it even came from within, that would still be forty to sixty thousand. I would have to find from somewhere, so it's nice to have sort of an idea of what kinds of monies.
Which is what the.
No, I, I don't think that that was necessarily the intent of the question, at least that's not how I took it. Because I agree, if it came from within, I still don't even know how much we're stealing from other departments or areas or whatever. Any questions on MAC? Now, where is she seeing the decrease on this one, mainly in? No. Because that would have been lost, Jim.
Tell us.
What was the?
Through the chair.
It went from four fifteen to three seventy-five.
Yeah, I know.
We had an extra teacher last year.
Okay.
Remember, we moved the teacher up to the elementary school.
That's right. Michael?
The technology, you know, investments at the MAC are, are under what category regularly?
It would be in the technology line under technology, further in the back.
We haven't gotten to technology yet, that's the back section. It's broken down by school in the back, in the technology section.
Michelle?
Eric?
Dr. Colley, with all the meetings with the, the principals and all that you've been doing over the past few weeks, has there been any discussion on, I know the adjustment counselor at the MAC works a lot during the very beginning of the year, doing all the testing of the preschool and K coming in, and it seems like they, have they had any discussions at all of splitting elementary and MAC? Guidance adjustment counselors, or?
No, in fact, the discussion went slightly different. The WES has, I mean, I know we're trying to push them to identify students, but we did not, students who may have needs at the elementary school. And what we discovered is that a lot of parents, once they, they've heard this, or, you know, either staff and parents are asking for a lot of evaluations, which take a tremendous amount of time. So the person who's actually doing both psychology work and school adjustment counselor work has been pulled a lot. And some of our other specialists, OTPT speech, into doing forty, fifty evaluations, way more than we have in any other given year. So if they were to ask, it would be for more, not, not to take from here.
With that adjustment counselor at the WES, I guess, getting overburdened, we're not hiring any outside help to come help for it all, are we?
No, what we do have some... No, what we do have sometimes is she'll get four, five, six, seven, ten, fifteen evaluations, and Sarah, who handles the rest of the buildings, will get the same amount. And every so often, there is, you know, because you do have the timelines, there may be one or two that they just can't do because there's not enough time in the day.
Are they able to pull the MAC person? I mean, the only reason why I asked if the conversation was here is because if we can pull her from the, not the MAC, at the, yeah, the MAC, to fill in for those extra three or four that aren't meeting the timelines, because she's very qualified to do it.
Yeah, she is. We had not had that discussion. We have not been, it's been slow to gel that idea of sharing staff across buildings. Staff seem to be entrenched in what building they're in. I mean, we've talked about sharing staff between high school and middle school, and that's a difficulty because of schedules, and even Wes and Mac have slightly different schedules.
Rather hiring someone from outside, I'd rather give them a little push and bring them over to the school.
Not a bad idea, though.
Okay, onto Wes.
Question I had at the West was textbooks, Dr. Colley, at the bottom.
The zero line is?
Yeah.
Textbooks, yes.
Two thousand nine, we spent three hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's it?
If you see, there are some books that we've spent in terms of supplies. They have been, some of them have been more, and some of this is, which way do you present them? If they're a textbook, which is a series versus, like Achieve Three Thousand, which is an online type?
Yeah, I don't want people at home to misunderstand. I mean...
Right, so if you take a look, right, if you take a look at the program lines, you see sixty-six thousand in ten, fifty in eleven, forty-five in twelve. We are slated for thirty-four, and again, once we do...
Which ones are that?
Page one, next page.
Page two.
Okay. Instructional equipment.
Yeah, 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 and if, because some of it is supplies as well. So, sometimes it's, it's not the book itself, it's all the stuff that comes with the books, the access to online resources, the consumables that we use a lot. Those kind of things add up, and that's where you see a lot of it coming out, instead of in the textbook line.
There's nothing like having that book in your hands sometimes. For a budget, maybe not for an elementary school.
I think it's going away from books. Anything else on Wes?
Yes.
Michael?
On the guidance, line eighteen, page nine of our budget. So, we have one full-time guidance person at, at Wes. Is there additional positions that are dealing with?
Yes, you have a guidance counselor, and you have a half-time school adjustment counselor, half-time psychologist.
Where are those by name?
It's the same, it's under the same line.
Okay.
We could change it to say guidance slash S. The problem is, you only get that much room.
So, that all fits into that amount?
So, that's one person plus a half and a half.
Mm-hmm.
And that is that psychologist that we hired last year?
Yep.
Okay.
And I guess what I was looking at is, and appropriately, the... Which position deals with the transitional issues from the West up to middle school? Is that within those three?
Usually, it'd be the guidance counselor. I mean, the interesting part is, both of those ladies have multiple certificates, so I know they play as a team. But from what I've heard, a lot of the meetings happen between the middle school teachers, the middle school administration coming down to the West, and then they talk about the kids going up. So, they get the team of administrators, the two guidance counselors slash social workers slash psychologist and the teachers to do the transition piece. So, I don't think just one of them deals with it. I think both of them deal with it.
Actually, as much as my question, if I could, was, is it the West department or the middle school department, or both, in situations that require preparation to follow the student? I don't know. I'm just wondering if, following the concept which we've discussed at length of, you know, sharing the passing of the baton from one school to the next, are our guidance departments sharing some of that as well, and is that reflective in the budget?
They, well, reflective in the budget, not per se, their salaries are in the budget, but not necessarily the time, effort, and energy that they take every spring to talk to the people at the middle school and the people at the middle school to talk to the people at the elementary school to say, hey, in this group of kids going from fourth grade to fifth grade, you have fifteen of them that are on special ed plans, you've got two or three that are ELL, you've got three or four that are on behavior plans, you have... And so, they go through the lists, when they put the list into fifth grade together, to make sure that you have groupings of students that actually works once they hit fifth grade. So, but I'm not sure, like, that's not an additional job that they do. They do that as part of their year. So, it doesn't appear as a different or an additional expense within the budget.
Well, just, again, what I see is, we've had discussion about, you know, not stopping at the school's gate for some of these guidance positions. We've talked about additional position at MAC that seems to have a peak in the season. And if, so I'm not just pointing at the MAC, but as far as the general policy of creating more inter-school relations with our guidance department, I think it starts with, that policy gets set through an accurate budget representation. And if we have a position that's going to spend, or it may make sense, it spends a third of their time, not at one school, but at the other, we could reflect it in the budget, and that's the time that we weigh in on.
At this point, we have not made that recommendation, but, yeah, that would be how you would represent it in the budget if we did that.
But we've taken three different people and put them into one dollar amount. So, again, unless I'm missing on the backup, which it may be there, but...
It's just two people. One of them has two hats.
And I do think that the inter-school relations between multiple departments is something we could consider adding into the budget document.
Anything else on...
Yes, just, I have no idea what it means. Supervisors, line ten, supervisors two times, two at ten.
We took some, we took some money out of there. If you remember, a couple of years when we did the negotiations, actually looking towards the new educator evaluation process that we now have. We had negotiated with the teachers' union to have supervisory positions. We finished negotiations into this year, so those positions were already projected into the budget. We literally just began discussions today about those kinds of positions because when the state opened up the door to revamping the whole educator evaluation process, it kind of leaves us in still this, you know, we're not going to just do it because we can. We're going to work with the staff to see how these positions can be used. So, we did not use these positions this year. We're suggesting that until, and I don't know, sincerely, I don't know when we will come to those agreements with the teachers. So, some of those amounts, we're moving into other lines. So, for example, at the middle school and the high school, I would move some of that, some of those monies towards the guidance director that I think the high school needs. I would move it towards the AD position here at the high school.
Fourteen thousand you're speaking of, that was budgeted for last year that we didn't have the people in it.
Well, I was, honestly, I was expecting to have this discussion with the teachers sooner, but, you know, it's a whole new process, so, again, we started that conversation today.
And you're going down almost six thousand dollars on that account?
Yeah, because I figured if there is some agreements with the teachers, we may implement through the middle of next year, once we know, basically, how this program, after we go through a whole year of supervision and evaluation, how it would work. My expectation would be that there would need to be some training, so you wouldn't start the year with those people in place.
So, what does it actually mean, though, the two, symbol at ten? What does that actually mean?
Point ten, it says.
Point two.
It says point?
Point one, yeah, point one.
Oh, at point, okay, point.
So, it would be, it would be sort of a stipend, or a person having two separate contracts, a contract as a teacher, a contract as a supervisor for additional work or additional days.
So, it's just a little bit of ex, okay.
Right.
The point makes a big difference. I didn't see the point.
Right.
It was two at ten. I'm like, is that ten hours or...
No, 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 yes.
All right, onto the middle school. You see the same thing on this one?
Yes.
Line eleven.
Okay.
Dr. Colley, line thirty-two. Is that also an increase in time position?
No, that's just different people moving into that position. We had other people before that were less experienced, so we paid less. And then we get somebody who's more experienced, so we paid more, and then we switch again, and then it's somebody else.
Back to, next page. Ninety through one hundred, or ninety-nine, the supplies. I mean, that's a breakdown, basically, of the high school supplies that...
Middle school.
Middle school supplies.
Yes, yes.
So, you show that that supply line increased back?
Yes, we did put some additional funding back in there.
Just to backtrack, we did the same to the West. You have that put back in.
And partly, the reason why I didn't go to the full amount is if you look back over the previous years, FY twelve was a little bit of an anomaly because we did have more monies than we put into the middle school that year. But if you look at the other years, we're bouncing between forty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five. So, I'm pretty sure there's a small bit of wiggle room in there. So, by just putting a partial amount back into those lines from when we cut it last year, not the whole amount, I'm hoping that the middle school can stay within that budget for those supply lines.
All right.
Line one fifteen, athletic supplies. Nothing's been budgeted last year or projected next year. I think this is what Michael was getting at with, those monies are coming out of revolving accounts for athletics fees. And now I understand why he wanted to know how it's being backfilled into where we're at here. Because we are spending money on athletic supplies.
Yeah, that amount, I think, was when we did the pads.
It was only five thousand? That was two years ago?
That was the part that we took out of a budget.
Okay.
Because, remember, it was too late.
So, there was a portion, right. And again, that was one of those transfers at the very end of the year.
Michael?
If I could, just to respond to the footnote, correct. Across the board, is if we're setting a policy to spend a certain amount of money, we should be showing it and showing where it comes from, whether it's... And that is what's missing.
No, it makes sense.
It's a good example.
Through that softball.
Anything else on middle school?
Yeah, this gets back into the enrollment question I had. The number of teachers is on the backup line, I guess. Look at teachers grade five through eight, so that's going to be in the backup somewhere, right, for breakdown, number teacher?
The number of teachers?
There is a listing.
Do you know where that is?
I'm thinking. I think I saw it online.
I think those were the staff lists for each of the building that I sent out.
So, within this document, we're just... We're not looking at student-teacher ratio because we don't have a list of number of teachers or number of students. So, I'm just wondering, does this meet our, I know we don't have a policy on student-teacher ratio, but those would be the kind of things I'd wonder about this, close to two million dollars within the budget. The grade five through eight teachers, is there a breakdown in the document that says how many teachers at each grade level?
We did not put it in like that. Usually...
I just didn't want to be having to look for it, so, okay, thank you.
No, it's not in there.
Carolina?
I just, I mean, with regard to enrollment, we get presentations as to what our enrollment is, going up and down. We get presentations with regard to where registration for the MAC is, the transfers that are happening. It's a continuous flow of information that I hear every time those presentations are made and I listen to. And it's something that's a flow. There's an ebb and flow to it. It's not, you can't say specifically, until September starts, I'm going to absolutely have one hundred and fifteen students. They project. Every time the MAC principal comes, she says, you know, this is where we're at, this is what we're projecting for next year. First grade, the same thing. This is what we're projecting is going to be in the first grade. So, there are always fluid numbers that are projections, but they're within tolerable percentages. I don't think you can pin down a number exactly.
Dr. Colley, when does Diamond allot their number of slots that they actually take from us? Do you know when that happens? Because I know they say it's like fourteen or fifteen, and one year was twenty-two.
Yeah, I know they do it in the spring. It's in their, I know we get the announcements for their meetings. It's usually in the spring. I'm not, not exactly sure if they have a regular cycle where they do it on a specific date.
I know they're doing, I think April first is when they're notifying students. So, we should know, hopefully, around there, how many, if they've opened up, I don't know how they determine whether they have extra slots, whether kids from Farver aren't applying there or whatever it might be, but...
I'm sure they look at all the schools and send them kids and decide how many they get.
It doesn't say.
I know we have a minimum number of slots, but it does go up and down.
If they're, right, if they have additional slots.
But it does go up sometimes, like last year was twenty-two students, so...
It's not on this one.
Okay.
No.
They're assuming that the commitment the town made last year for the increased slots is carrying over, I believe. We have someone from FinCom here. Has Diamond been in yet or...
Diamond has not been in yet. I suppose today their budget is not yet high.
And Bristol Laggie, I don't think is either, because I saw her last week.
Moving to twenty-two again. Wow.
There's been a lot of, how many transfers, you know, there's also transfers.
Anything else on middle school?
Actually, yeah, real quick, just for clarification on it. Student club advisors, we're budgeting thirteen thousand, but we do charge... So, is there a percentage of this coming out of athletic, not athletic fees, those twenty-five dollars revolving account?
No, that's one of the things that I was suggesting we do this year.
Okay. So, we don't take any of the money out of revolving, so when a kid pays twenty-five dollars, is it going into revolving, or is it going to pay down this thirteen-seven?
Historically, we use the money from the revolving account to pay for...
I'm sorry, line twenty-one.
More supplies and things of that nature. We didn't, we had no clue what we would get this year. So, this year is a good test case for what we could envision getting. That's why I'm saying we could take the money that's now accumulated into that account and use it to offset these kind of budget numbers.
Okay, good.
Or offset the fees. That's the other balance point.
I'd rather offset fees than offset our budget, just for conversation.
If I could continue on that question, I'm just wondering, on the amount that we have budgeted, are we able to fill... have budgeted, are we able to fill all the club advisor positions at the, at the middle school, or is there gaps because we're not funding enough?
There are a few that get funded directly through grants, like the Westport Education Foundation, but they don't, those don't even appear on here. If they fund them, they run it, they pay the advisor.
The science there, I think.
So they have, they have allowed us to do more clubs, but it has nothing, it doesn't come into our budget, because they do their granting on their own. We don't even, we don't even say.
It doesn't come into this document.
No.
Let's not speak to the issue that I think I've made pretty clear. I believe there should be an indication on our document that shows that we are getting grants, and they're getting paid for things, so that there won't be this confusion of large amounts of money carrying over that are from this year's fees. We're not supposed to accumulate fees.
Well, the west-
The activity and/or the sport is participated in, that's the policy, that's when we came up with the fees, I was part of the committee when we selected the fees, we were told that those fees would be to cover the costs. Now, if we're able to support here or through grants, it should be accurately reflected.
Well, the Westport Education Foundation, I'm calling it a grant, it's really a donation that we can't rely on, so-
Grants, donations, fees, they all should be accounted for, correct?
I don't have access to their accounting, though. They are a dominant institution.
Our accounting.
No, no, I'm saying for, for the stuff that they provide, the question was asked, do we provide more than what shows here? That's one area that the Westport Education Foundation has been really good with.
We don't, we don't provide it, we-
We don't provide it, we're just-
These are offered to the students, student ed foundation.
Bought directly from the ed foundation.
The fees are charged by the ed foundation, through the ed foundation, and they're not schools.
And they keep the accounting, and we don't touch their money.
If I could just try to clarify real quick, Mike, this thirteen-seven has nothing to do with-
What the ed foundation does.
We're funding our programs, if they happen to provide something, it's not taking out of this, it's not making us have extra monies in thirteen-seven. That's above and beyond, okay.
Well, my question was on the thirteen-seven, it's, the budget is created for the student club advisors, of which there's, I don't believe any backup of how many clubs, how many, how many students are in the clubs, so when we get this cash flow dilemma that's seen in our revolving accounts of accumulation-
What dilemma, Mike?
The dilemma of having large balances in the revolving accounts that you brought up last week. And what I'm suggesting, I'm simply asking is, is this enough? Or are we not paying enough and not being able to, do we have any vacancies?
I do, well, and I think, I think you're right on one point.
I'm at the middle school.
You're right on one point, our fees don't pay for, they don't pay the entirety of what it costs to run those clubs.
That was, in previous years, you would pay one fee, and you could be in fifteen clubs for the year, so there was no way the, the fees would cover the advisors. This year is the first year that we've asked, if you're in a club, you pay twenty-five dollars. We, we're trying to project that, I mean, we're halfway through the year, we know some of the clubs that have already run, how much money we bring in, so we'll be able to give you a better accounting this year, and the recommendation to either reduce fees, or use those fees to pay for the advisors that are running the, the program, and whether we need to keep some money in the budget or not, or just pay it.
If you have a nine hundred dollar, and I'm just going on one of the lower ones, a nine hundred dollar stipend, you need to have thirty-six kids just to pay for your-
For your advisors.
Your stipend, so at the rate that we are charging of the twenty-five dollars, and that doesn't include some of those, like art club, or whatever, where they have supplies and whatnot, that they need to purchase for the actual clubs that get funded from somewhere, whether-
That's what I'm saying, we do have some amount of money in the revolver now that we could use to either reduce the fees, that we know that that structure is a little different, that we have some money in the budget that offsets some of the, you know, that pays for some of the stipends. We could do that, but up to this year, we, we really couldn't.
Anything else on middle school?
Yeah, the, again, the question I had is thirteen, and you mentioned something about the amount of the stipends, is that on here?
Yeah, it's right there.
In the backup detail.
Which page?
Westport, Westport Middle School, backup detail. I'm actually looking at the high school one right now.
What page number?
Uh, it's the first page after the budget.
Three?
It's the page after twelve.
Page one.
Hold them back bottom.
And I was referring to like the nine nineteen, most of those are nine hundred dollars for the stipend that gets paid to the teacher.
Nine nineteen.
So the nine nineteen, so that's what I, my question was, was nine nineteen enough to make sure we have a math team, and make sure we have a collector's club? Are these clubs all active this year?
Yes, they should.
That's what the question was. I mean, you know, I'm not going to keep coming back into where the other revenue columns are, but I just want to make sure we're, that these clubs-
I believe they are.
We're paying enough money to attract someone who, who leave them.
I don't know that we're paying enough money, but they are all running.
Well, then, then we are.
I would say that's probably debatable. High school.
Before, if you're going to go to the high school, maybe that's a better explanation, because you can see on the first page of the backup detail of high school, the many things we do offer. There were lines in the high school, and even the middle school, and in other parts of the budget, that have not been used for years, but at one point in time, we may have had that. So there was a funding source at one point in time, that when either, so for example, the, the girls varsity soccer, and the assistant girls soccer coach, when those, when that program stopped running, and I don't know when it was, it could have been, oh, six, seven, eight, ten years ago.
It was mid-nineties.
When that went, we kind of left the account there, it's a historical vestige of what is, or what was, but there's no money in it. And you can see, more or less, what we pay the different coaches and the club advisors. Some of them by, by contract are more than just a nine ninety.
Tony, you had a question on middle school.
Let's back up to the budget, and what should be and shouldn't be in the budget. If the PTO buys three smart boards for eight thousand dollars, we don't budget a line item for eight thousand dollars in our budget.
But if we had a line item for smart boards, it should reflect that it was taken out of it.
Right.
Only if we do that.
If we had a line item, we're going to buy fifteen of them, and they bought five of them, we need, we'd reflect that five of them were bought from outside source.
We can't use, you know, past practice donations to budget next year.
Oh, no.
That's why that's not on here.
Well, the, the school needs, like, we needed smart boards.
We get it, it's great, but we can't say-
We needed smart boards.
Actually, they gave us ten, can we assume we're going to get, you know, we can't do that.
No, but we say we needed fifteen, and then PTO stepped up and said, hey, we'll buy a ten of them. So that, there's now ten extra smart boards in the budget that needs to be taken out.
My question was to the point of why it's not, why there isn't a nine ninety, that donation, because it's at one time-
Fees are a constant, we know that.
Fees are, that fees are there.
Fees are a constant.
Well, you know, you know the amount, you just don't-
They're not a constant.
The suggested format by, I mean, everything I've suggested came out of the presentation by the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, and they're suggesting that it is, so I'll send you their explanation on why they believe that all revenues should be in the budget document, and give them a call.
I'll text them.
Carolina?
Donations are not revenue. I don't know how you can count donations as revenue, they're not revenue.
No, no, if it's a, if it's a dollar, it is revenue.
No, it's a donation, it's not revenue. Donations are not revenue, they're not equal to revenue. We have to accept the donations.
If it's a grant, it's-
It's not a grant, it's a donation.
If, if your budget is projecting that you're going to pay for something half, and you know you're going to get it from something else, it's on there. If you don't know you're going to get it, guess what? You don't put it in there. But I, in fact, would like to share this document with everyone.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, if you don't know, if you don't know, you can't put it on there, well, how could you? You don't know what's there. What you put there is, there is some expenditures that are being matched up with other grants and other revenue sources, many, millions of dollars, and they should be reflected in this document.
A question. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, around what you're saying. Say, this coming up year, in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget, say the PTO decides to pay for five smart boards, and at this point, we're not even expecting that, so how, I guess my question is, how do we even plan for that?
Only if we had planned for it, and they provided it, then you'd have to show that it was taken out, that's all.
That's what I said, right.
Or, but the, but the issue is many-
But if you don't know what's coming, then there's no way to budget for it.
You can't plan for it.
Historically, it's been more, we'll buy you the ten additional, so that we can go all the way down to the next grade level, it hasn't been, we'll give you, because PTOs tend not to give you money to reduce your budget, they usually tend to give you money to do things above and beyond what's in your budget. So, I, I would be very careful in telegraphing the idea of, we're going to want to adjust our budget, depending on what donations we get in, because I don't think that was the-
Not to adjust the budget, I mean, after the fact, you have to adjust.
The document, if, if, because you said you wanted to wrap your head around it, I just want to make one more comment. The document really doesn't talk about PTOs?
It doesn't have to, it could be anybody, I was just, I was just using it as an example.
So, right, so what I wanted to suggest is, special revenue funds, grants, revolving accounts, gifts, user fees, it's their suggestion. It's a suggestion I agree with. Title-one grant funding, is, is that in this budget?
We've never presented it that way, I was just, I was just getting to the point of realizing what you're asking. If you want me to put the title-one and title-two attached to this and call it part of the budget, we can certainly do that.
Well, is part of this budget matching up with title-one money?
We can give you last year's title-one grant, in the hope to God that it's the same for the next year, but yes, we could do that, we could add it in.
Well, I, I-
And you can have it as part of your budget.
I'm not going to just hope, I'm, I'm going to count on your, your professional recommendation of what you think it's going to be, based on a lot of information that's out there on title-one for next year. Do we know what's going to happen in two weeks with the federal government? No.
Possible five percent reduction.
But we need to have a budget that actually, that accurately reflects all revenues.
You can.
That's according to John Crafton's-
I'm not a budget person, by any means. If our budget says fifteen-nine, is that fifteen-nine a check that we're getting from the town of Westport, or is it less than that, because we're getting backfilled, title-one, chapter-seventy, and everything else?
No, it's a check from the town of Westport, because title-one, title-two, those-
I'm just, I'm sure it's not a check direct, the town of Westport, when we give the FinCom a fifteen-nine million dollars-
They appropriate that amount of money.
Okay.
And-
But then we get other sources, give us money, title-one, chapter-seventy, reimbursements, everything else.
The, the issue-
So the town is actually not paying fifteen-nine to us, they're paying maybe fourteen-seven.
No, 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 they're paying fifteen-nine, because those grants are specific program grants. So for example, one of the biggest things with title-one is to supplement, not supplant. That is one of the actual audits that the state does do, or actually, the federal government does do on your title-one grant. Title-one is supposed to go to specific kids who have needs, who are low socio-economic, and you are not, to take your money out of your budget, reduce it, and plug in title-one, that is against federal, federal regulations.
So we actually spend, maybe next year, we'll probably spend sixteen-six million?
And usually, yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't, in other words, the town doesn't deal with that amount? It's, I mean, it's information that we provide to you, and therefore, it's public for anybody to know that we have these grants, but they don't, in other words, you can't just go to town and say, well, because you're getting a title-one grant this year, let's reduce your budget over here, because then the federal government will pull the title-one grant.
I think that's what causes confusion on the town floor, though, that I'm even confused about it, to where if we did, if we were transparent and said, hey, we, we, we're only requesting fifteen-nine, but it costs us seventeen-two to run this budget, or whatever it might be, twenty million, whatever it could be, we're, we're actually running a lot more. Well, actually, I'd love to have you come up.
Come sit with us, Tracy.
I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I'm glad you came up.
Taking full advantage of the fact that you're here.
Good evening, Tracy Priestner, FinCom liaison to the Westports Community School. I completely agree with part of what you're saying, that if you include the line item for grants and separate funding that you do get in, it creates a very different picture for the town. It increases your overall operating budget, and it shows that the town presents this much money, but we do receive much more additional revenue from outside sources that are required and necessary in order to maintain and run the department. So, there is certainly some value to that. And in fact, that's how the library does their budget on their liaison as well, and they have a line item in there that shows the library trust fund grants and other things, and then they have their expenditure lines that they show, this is what we got in from that, and then how they spent it out. So, kind of what you're saying, we get title-one, chapter money from the federal government, and that's a plus into your budget, but then it's a subtraction and show how you spend that money. So there is some value to that. And whenever you're ready to answer questions, please do.
Stick around.
Yeah, yeah.
Hang on a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
In no particular order, but some of my questions. If, when you do present to the FinCom, if you could bring your latest projections for student enrollment, I think that will help out on the FinCom. I did see that your fees generated from the busing are sixty-five thousand, if I'm correct on that. Can you speak to the amount of revenue from the sports that are charged? I didn't see it, I'm, there's lots of pages, it's probably very well in the book.
That's Wednesday's, but I could do it now, because I have some numbers.
After Wednesday, okay.
Or you can call the office, I'll dig it up.
Okay. If you can just give me a percentage number for your contractual obligations, I see the number that it totals, but it's, isn't it two point?
It's about two percent for next year.
Two percent for your teacher staff?
Well, it's about two percent for all staff.
Okay.
Teachers, teachers and ASME have also steps and steps.
Yep, steps and lanes.
Well, ASME only has steps, there's three of them.
And that's clerical or non-clerical?
It's clerical, it's custodians, it's paras and TAs, LPNs, all of those have steps.
Okay.
Teachers, in addition to the two percent, and the steps, there's ten of them on their scale, there's also lanes, going all the way from bachelors all the way to CAGs, CAG slash doctorate.
So they all, those two departments had a two percent increase, and then support staff non-
It's higher than two percent, isn't it?
Well, if you add the steps and-
It's two, it's two, your straight contract, and then in addition to the two percent contractually, you may have someone qualify for steps and lanes.
Yes.
But your support staff, non-clerical, what's the percentage?
Are you talking about Zen staff?
I'm sorry.
Meaning, staff that does not bargain their contracts in a collective bargaining agreement?
It's in here, it was separated out on page six. It was lines nineteen through, there were support clerical is line nineteen, and then down further, there was other support staff, but not clerical. So were those two percent?
There's a little bit of both in there. We have some administrative assistants-
Okay.
-who are not in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
They have individual contracts, because they're exempt-
Okay.
-staff.
So they would not-
People who deal with contractual negotiations, and salaries, hiring, firing, those kind of things.
So they would not be benefiting from any two percent?
They-
Because they don't have a con-
For the most part, the school committee has usually, and I'm saying usually, allowed the exempt staff, those who are not, including administrators-
Right.
-the same percentage increase as the, as the rest- -the same percentage increase as the, um, as the rest of the staff, at least in the last couple of years that I've been here.
That's what's budgeted here, that they would receive the same contractual obligations?
It's an assumption.
Okay.
We have not brought that to the school committee for next year.
Okay, no problem.
We're actually in negotiations also with the ASME for next year.
Okay.
So there's an assumption built in, obviously, because you're in the middle of negotiations.
Okay. Um, on page three, accreditation support material, on line item one thirty, goes from fifty-six fifty to eighteen-six fifty. Can you elaborate on what-
Which, which line?
Uh, line item one thirty on page three.
Yeah.
Under district.
Five-six fifty to eighteen-five.
Superintendent, Agent-
Oh, under district?
Sup, the superintendent, Agent, yep.
Just because it's a significant increase, if you can have some explanation of that. Line one thirty. It went from fifty-six fifty to eighteen-six fifty. I mean, it just sticks out to me as a three-hundred percent increase, so I, some sort of explanation. I mean, I know to some extent, you know, you go through your NIAC or your high school accreditation. Is that the same type of thing, or?
Our-
That's middle school?
Our hope was to push the middle school to go in that direction as well. High school just is finishing theirs, MAC did theirs.
MAC just finished there.
I don't think there's one for elementary school, but the process is, it's almost like doing a, an audit-
Right.
-of that department.
Okay.
So we're thinking the middle school would be next.
That's, I just was wondering what that-
So the money, that money's actually being moved, because the other schools no longer need it.
Okay.
So we're using the same, right.
Okay, so it's an expenditure, but it's a reallocation, is that the high school?
Right. High school is, uh, I think their visit is this weekend or next weekend. Next weekend.
Yeah, okay.
Not this weekend, the following.
Um, one of your line items, you talk about the nurse subpay is a hundred dollars per day. What is your teacher's sub rate per day?
Eighty-five.
Uh, it depends, if you're a bachelor's, uh, I wanna say it's eighty-five.
Okay.
And it changes if you're there for more than twenty days in a row.
Okay.
It becomes bachelor step one per diem.
Professional status, right?
A question on your very last page. You had spoke of a special ed and ELL requirement of a hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred. Is that in addition to the ninety thousand that's mentioned under possible new placement? Is that in addition to the ninety? So it's one-twenty plus ninety?
It's actually one-twenty plus, uh, a hundred and, one-twenty-nine plus a hundred and fifty, because you also have the transportation.
Okay, so it's one-twenty-nine, seven, plus that ninety that you've already mentioned.
You, you have right now an ELL teacher that works part-time.
Mm-hmm.
Just looking at the new regulations, we're figuring we, we need him full-time.
Okay.
Um, and then you have a teacher at the middle school that they have requested for a special ed and a part-time teacher at the elementary school.
Okay.
All right, Tracy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off.
Okay.
And then we'll come back, so we can keep, we gotta keep moving too.
Okay.
Um, one more.
One more, all right.
Make it a good one.
You're, I'm, I'm looking for a really good one. Um, for your increase in staffing, do, well, do you have a projected increase in staffing this year?
The only increases are the ones, the ones that I listed, yeah.
Okay, so your bubble classes will stay the same?
Yep.
Yeah, the increase in staffing is, is not any new teachers into classes and-
It's, it's a few part-timers moving to full-time.
Right, you're, it's predominantly in the special ed area.
Reclassifying, yeah, reclassifying.
Between, uh, paras and teacher assistant, paras one up, teachers assistant one up.
There is a breakdown, if you go to last week's school committee page website, there is, um, Tony has a copy, it's color coded and online.
All right.
And it shows a little bit more of, like, the specifics of what each-
For staffing.
But if you wanna stick around, you can ask more questions after.
Okay, I'm good.
Tracy, in the original list that the staff, the, the administration put forward, they did have some additional staff?
Yeah, they did.
And some of them were-
That's one of this four hundred thousand dollars that got pushed beyond two thousand and fourteen, that's some of that stuff.
Thank you.
All right, on to the high school. I was gonna give my brain a little bit of a break.
Either that or a whiplash.
No, Matt, you're, you're the whiplash, Tony.
Uh, Doc called, uh, line eleven.
Where are we at, Tony?
High school?
Page thirteen.
Director guidance.
High school, that's that, uh-
Mm-hmm. We have, we have a staff person, the guidance counselor retiring. So what I'm looking for is using that salary and add a little bit more to go back to what we had a few years ago, where we had two guidance counselors, two school adjustment counselors, and then a director of guidance that was doing some of the guidance counselor work, but also worked additional time to do the coordination of testing, uh, to help with the, uh, student, um, scheduling, and did a lot of the administrative pieces that now has either been picked up by the guidance, um, counselors themselves, which they really shouldn't be doing, 'cause it keeps them from actually working with the kids, or, um, the office has picked up some of it.
That, some of that seventy-six came from line item twelve, the next line, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Eight-sixty.
So you see the guidance counselor line reduced and the other one go up?
Right.
Dr. Colley, line fifty-seven, home tutoring, I guess that's contractual services? About how many students, because that's almost a five-hundred percent interest?
The, the issue is, we never know, and we have some fragile kids here at the high school when parents give us a-
About how many, when you're saying fourteen hundred, what do you guess, what is, how many people is that planned for?
Maybe two.
Okay, for the whole year?
Sometimes it's a whole year, sometimes it's like half a year.
Okay.
So we've had kids, for example, we have one at the middle school that spent almost all of last year in homesk-, not homeschooling, but home tutoring, because of a very specialized, uh, medical issue that they had. And they came back and now they're going back home, so we're gonna provide home tutoring again. And we've had a couple here at the high school too.
The ones that aren't the medical, is it ever offered to our teachers to, uh, to do the tutoring and be at their, whatever their rate is? Would it be cheaper that way to, instead of having a contractual service with Sylvan Learning Center or whatever it might be?
These are, these are for our kids.
Oh, I know.
We call it contractual, no, but I'm saying, if we provide the tutoring ourselves, if we are authorizing it, we pay our teachers, and it's usually a thirty bucks an hour that's in their contract. But it's above and beyond what they do during the day, so we call it a contractual service. So we, we seldom contract out. The only time we contract out is when the kid is at a medical facility for an extended period of time. And then that facility, so if they're there for a medical issue, uh, many hospitals will contract out to local teachers in the area of the hospital to come and work with kids who happen to be in a recovery facility for six months, three months. And then they send us the bill, and that's how we pay it.
Thank you.
So sometimes it is contractual services of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
Michelle?
Michael?
Yeah, I also had a little star on the guidance counselor position and, and figured out that shift. But you mentioned that the ratio, right now there's three councils, and so you're gonna go to two director, uh, one director and two counselors?
Yes, which is what we had a couple of years ago.
And, and then in addition to that, the, the, there's an additional person-
Two.
Listed as-
We have a school adjustment counselor that works mostly with the, uh, regular ed population and the issues that come up with kids from time to time. And then we have a school adjustment counselor that works primarily, and I say primarily again because they work as a team, so sometimes they, they take on some of those additional responsibilities across the two people. Um, but the other person-
So the project action position fits, is that what it's called?
School adjustment counselor.
Yeah, project action is one of our duties, yeah.
It's like a, it's a, it's a social worker.
Is that the person that fits into the project action position?
That's, one of the people who happens to be the school adjustment counselor, runs that program after school, yes.
And so as we're looking at, at that matrix, some of those responsibilities, uh, and, and skill set would also be helpful at the middle school. So I'm just wondering, is there any way to look at, at the makeup of the guidance at the middle school and, and have it fall under the same, I guess I should ask, who, the director of guidance at the high school is gonna report to who?
Well, it, it's, it's a good question, we've kicked this one around a little bit, um-
And, and just so you know, the reason I ask that is I wondered if there was a way to use certain skills that are active at the high school-
Yes.
-that may be able to go back to the middle school.
I, I know exactly where you're going. Um, we, through Damascus, um, work that we have been doing, Massachusetts Association of School Counselors, um, we had a little bit of seed money from RTT to send people to training to establish these, um, school counselor guidelines and procedures and plans. And we started at the high school and then migrated it into the middle school. We picked up the, uh, middle school staff in that. Um, one of the things that, again, because we will be putting out a posting for the director of guidance, is depending on who we see, whether we make that position responsible for just doing some guidance work here at the high school and some administrative, um, work? Or do we have them do more than just the high school and try to coordinate guidance counseling and counseling services in general, all the way from elementary and maybe even MAC all the way to the high school? Uh, my only concern is, I know a few years ago when we had that position, a person was running on all cylinders just here, but if you get a very high-quality person, you may be able to stretch them to do more coordination between the schools. So yes, we've been thinking about that.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Colley, one oh seven, line one oh seven, oh, uh, I'm sorry, one oh six. Guidance supplies.
Again, that's because we're trying to get them to do different things this time around or into the future with Damascus programs. They're basically creating and also acquiring materials and curriculum to do more in the classroom work, uh, which they never had done before.
Are you sure that some of that-
That's, that, yeah, that was part of the presentation from last week.
And some of the school stuff is in the rest of the budget too, you've got technology and stuff too, so. On to custodial. Any questions here, Freddie?
Yes.
Eric?
Dr. Colley, will we charge town basketball leagues, baseball leagues, and other, uh, groups to use our facilities? Is that, uh, how's that affecting the custodial?
It comes out of the maintenance accounts. We use it to offset the, um, heat and electricity bills. They're in the building, they're out there using our materials.
That's the next one.
So it's under, it's actually under maintenance.
Okay.
Uh, maintenance, or the next?
The last, page sixteen.
Yeah.
On to Hal.
Did you skip maintenance?
No, it was part of that section.
Okay, 'cause there's two different tabs actually on mine, so-
It's two tabs, it's two tabs.
Okay.
It's not two sections, though. Did I skip it?
I thought you had.
Sorry.
'Cause he had mentioned maintenance, but it was a different tab here.
It's page sixteen.
I had a question, Dr. Colley.
Custodial.
Custodial Wes, substitute. Do we have a long-term sub there this year?
We have had subs, yes, for different people who have medical issues, and sometimes they're long-term, sometimes they're short-term.
Yep.
Well, before we go to maintenance, the, uh, I know there was a line item, maybe it is under maintenance? Yeah, it is, okay.
All right, on to maintenance line.
Dr. Colley, on the, on the backup list, towards, towards the bottom there, roof maintenance, eleven-five.
Hold on, hold on. Where are you?
Yeah, backup list for maintenance.
Oh, he's looking at the line, page one, backup detail.
Which one are you looking at?
Uh, the eleven, uh, sixth from the bottom there, roof maintenance, eleven-five.
Above tight tank pumping.
Mm-hmm. The Wes still has an old roof. Remember, we were going to replace-
Oh, the Wes.
The Wes.
Ah, it's Wes, okay. Question answered.
Not one of the new roofs?
No, no, please no.
Backup list, still-
The ma, the backup list on maintenance.
That's what I was asking, I was, it's the Wes, yeah. What, I don't know where I would've seen the comparison to last year.
Talking about two ones?
No, roof, roof maintenance, is that, is that to replace?
No, it's just to maintain the, uh, the, um, elementary school roof. There are some of the, uh, trim around the edges that we have been advised to start replacing, even if it's little bits at a time, 'cause eventually if those failed, then the, the roof member in itself may go. And we already have enough issues. I mean, it's, it's not leaking or anything at this point. That was just one of those things when, uh, Mr. Gifford came from the town to do, you know, the review of the buildings and what we needed, that was one of the things he flagged.
That's coming out of line twenty-nine on the maintenance page.
Yes.
The one-seventy, two-seventeen.
Yes.
All those items.
Yep.
I'm just, uh-
Uh, the line number twenty-nine, right under maintenance of buildings.
One-seventy-two seventy.
One-seventy-two seventy.
And on a separate note, just, luckily, we, uh, we took some of those big trees down, huh?
Some of them came down all by themselves.
Yeah.
Imagine, man, we should've cut some of those.
Yeah, and sadly, on our truck, some of them came down too.
No, that was on the road. We didn't have anything to do with that.
But it came down on the truck. Um, on to Hal. Thankfully, all the staff were okay, nobody was hurt.
Yes, yes. Cut a nine lives.
At the middle school, Dr. Colley, at the top, professional salaries, was that just the, the savings the early, early this year?
We had, um, a new person take over that position, so yeah, it gets reflected. They haven't gone through all their steps yet.
In two thousand and eleven, was that part-time?
Two thousand and eleven.
Is that what?
Which one?
Uh, the same thing, middle school.
The middle school?
Number ten.
That's two thousand and twelve.
I'm sorry, two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, was that part-time?
They, no, the issue was that we had a lot of sub time, so it doesn't come out of there, it comes out of the sub line.
Okay.
Yeah, gotcha.
If you take it, yeah, if you, at number twenty-five.
That's right, I forgot about that, okay. Um, media?
We've done this one, are you correct?
No.
Media, no.
We, some questions were asked.
There was-
Questions on the beginning.
He, he mentioned it right off the get-go. But this is the whole district that was only talking one spot.
Dr. Colley, where in here do we have roof phones, any of that stuff? That's not, that's, um, capital, that's capital.
If you notice in the, uh, maintenance, we had also moved the, um, middle school monitoring, 'cause my hope is we'll deal with that next as a separate line.
budget on the MAC, so we've got to break it down.
Page 1, Mike 22. Page 22.
Well, the technology starts on-
It starts on 20.
20, and as we look through each category, there's a variety of line items, and then broken down by each school. My concern, and this would be the time to bring it up, is the investment at the high school level in technology, whether it be...I don't...I can't go any further than say the investment in technology, because I don't know what it's going to take to have more computer stations for the students at the high school. It appears that we're...if we look at our total technology expenses, by...broken down by school, that we're-
Thank you.
-we're investing in some technology for the kindergarten classes, yet we don't have enough stations for the high school students. So, break it down as you wish, I'm just not seeing that. It would make sense to allocate a higher percentage of our technology budget into the high school student. So by our next meeting, I'll come up with my recommendations, if that's how we look at that.
If I may, if I may, we-
Because this isn't broken down by school total, I don't think.
Top of 22?
Top of...
Sorry.
In that one?
Look at the backup detail, I need to find all the different lines from our school.
Yeah, I thought I had seen that. What page then?
Just because it is kind of confused in this way, but that's the way. You have a fancy backup detail.
Yeah, well, mine is a working...so that's everything that has to do with the superintendent's office, everything that has to do with this.
I know I had seen it somewhere, so...
And tech is kind of those things that it's hard to break up amongst the schools, it's not just...so then, this is everything that goes into the MAC.
Super MAC, how many are you looking at?
I see.
Okay, 14, no, keep going.
No, it's right here. Five iPads per K, computers for smart boards.
So we've got 14, 22 at the elementary, 13 at the middle school, and 24, actually 25,000 for the high school. My concern is that it seems like I'm hearing more about the high school needs, and it would make sense to tackle that high school need before, in my view, to prioritize the high school student interaction with technology above and beyond. And maybe we're just not putting enough into technology. I'm not saying to balance it against the other levels of learning, but I'd like to see this budget take care of the waiting lines for computer stations for high school students.
Unfortunately, there's never enough money for all the technology we would like to have, or to, you know, reduce those lines and still take care of the basic needs at the other levels. One of the things we've been trying to do over the years is to keep at least some level of replacement of all the equipment, so that we don't fall into the position, for example, that the town is at, where, you know, some of their systems are so old that certain parts of the either hardware or the hardware-software combination ceases to function. We have some technology that's, you know, doesn't sound very old, but six, seven years old, and begin to lose their support from the different software vendors that are out there, and therefore you start being able...you know, you stop being able to use them. So even if it is X number of computers on teachers' desk and a few in the back of the room, if we don't replace those on a regular basis, you're going to lose them. So I think if what Mr. Sullivan was saying is that perhaps we leave that in there and then add more funding to the high school, so the high school has more access, we can do that, but I'm not sure, again, and he mentioned this, I don't think we're looking at, or we wouldn't recommend doing it at the expense of the replacement cycle that we're on.
How many computers are on a Chrome cart? That?
Chrome cards, how many can you put in one of those? 30?
So, one Chromebook cart is 30?
Yes.
So you are looking at a new-
Yeah, and that's what I tried to highlight, just because I wasn't sure where you guys were going, and I had a conversation with Dr. Colley. Technology is one of those nice things for the budgeting, because it's a one-and-done, as opposed to like a first-grade teacher, that once you put one in, it would carry budget year over budget year. So I tried to highlight in there what we had talked about as a need, that we were, for next year's budget, that we're going to try and buy out of this year's budget, so those aren't like-
Which is the FY30, you've got the one Chromebook cart. So you are looking to add 30 computers like these-
Yes.
-in the high school.
Yes. And in addition to that, the high school teachers combined some of their classroom supply money amongst them, and we were able to...so this year, there'll be two carts. There's one-
So 16?
-there's one that came out of the high school budget themselves, and then that one, if you approve it next week. So that will be two carts, which will be a tremendous help.
Okay.
And then if you notice, you can kind of see that things cycle through, like two years ago, we redid two of the labs here, so that cycle continues. It's just so much easier to buy them in groups, so they're all the same for a particular building.
So we are looking at some investment here in technology as well-
Yes.
-to alleviate some of the strain that we're seeing.
Yes, but you have to understand, this particular school, it has one, two, three, four, five, five labs, two-
Close to that one.
-two mobile carts. One mobile cart will be going out of service soon, because it's, you know, aging badly. The batteries don't work anymore, but the kids-
So we're looking at 90?
Uh, no, for-
60 for this year.
60, yeah.
No, no, total, grand total that they'd have available to them.
Here at the high school?
That aren't like, aren't classroom labs? Is that what you're talking about?
That's different.
Yes, 90.
90 here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you're going to have a whole, almost a whole classroom.
And then, there's an additional one for the middle school as well.
And the additional Chrome cart?
That's in, you'll see in there as well. Do you have the same-
Yeah, Beth, to you.
Yep.
Last week's, Dr. Colley, your base needs requests revised list there, the portable technology, 24,000 for the high school, that's what we're talking about.
Those are the Chromebooks, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, these, they're highlighted in orange. Michael?
And so those Chromebooks will be stationed here for students to access? They have to use it here within?
No, in fact, the Chromebooks-
The Chromebooks, you don't.
-would probably be pushed into classrooms, and the teachers would utilize them and that.
Right, so, and I know that the labs are dedicated to activities within the classroom setting.
Yes.
I'm looking for computer stations where students can access a computer if they have study period or-
Okay, we don't do studies anymore, that's one.
English-
But that-
Wherever the students that have had to wait in line to get on a computer, I thought there was a-
There's not students waiting in line, there's teachers waiting in line to be able to access computers-
As a class.
-as a class. Does that-
Well, that's even worse than what was reported to me. What I was told is, as we get towards certain periods of peak performance, a high school student, typically it may be senior year before a major project is due-
The senior projects, I definitely, yes.
-they can't get on a computer.
Yes.
And I'm not suggesting...I'm just wondering if these computers are going to be available to them in some setting. Ideally, I'd like to see every student that comes into the school be assigned a computer, put it in their locker or take it home, and make sure it works, and if they need to print, put the printers in their rooms. But that's my own...I know that's a totally different model than what we've been doing.
Well, I wouldn't say it's one that we wouldn't strive to be at, but it's got a lot, and we've talked-
Not in this year.
Right, and it's got one of those things that we'd really have to plan a-
A rollout.
A big rollout, because there's schools that have done that that have had to pull back, because there's lots of things that you don't anticipate that come along with that.
There is. And, but again, my...so that's why I limit my concern to-
Right.
-students accessing technology.
And I should also say-
So I didn't know the setting was that the teachers can't get on the-
And I should also say that even though the classroom labs have classes scheduled in them, typically there's one period during the day when students are not in there, and the librarian, the media specialist books that up. So, I mean, the...this is a pretty busy place, but given what they had here five or six years ago, they've come light years.
Right, but so I guess what I'm...with the new information, if the teachers are having trouble getting on, is it a capacity issue?
Not trying, not getting on. Once they have a computer, they're fine.
Okay.
It's...we have more...you have to understand that the way the textbook companies are going and the way that the standards are written, it's much more research-based, it's much more collaborative, the textbooks all have a computer piece to them, and I'm not talking just the high school, because start at pre-K and work your way up, that's the way it's going. So you might spend a little bit less for a book-
On a textbook.
-on a textbook, not that we see that huge savings, but a lot of it now you have to access online.
So we've addressed it, okay.
Beth, do we need two Chrome carts?
Oh, I am telling you that whatever we put in this school or in the...in any of the school, I feel like they would be used.
I mean, would it solve a lot of problems if we, instead of budgeting for one, we budgeted for two?
It would lessen the problem.
It would lessen the problem, and they will be getting two this fiscal year.
Three would be great.
So three?
Yes.
Beth, is it possible for a student that may not have a computer at home to come into the library and sign one out?
We haven't gotten to that, we've talked about that.
Sign a waiver, if they break it, they own it.
That's part of it. The other part of it is that typically a student who doesn't have a computer-
Won't have internet access either.
Yes, and there's really limited, like-
Little Wi-Fi's.
Well, the Chromebooks, you laugh, but the Chromebooks have started to address that issue, so I feel like we're not that far away from that.
Where they can buy a certain amount of time.
Yes, yes, and I think that would be something that we could maybe support tapping like a grant, you know, because typically if a student doesn't have the technology at home-
Sure, Microsoft must have a grant out there somewhere for it, for the Feinstein, or somebody has some money to do this.
So, right now, assuming, just let's assume you've got the two Chromebooks up here, what does that bring our student technology ratio to?
Well, we have 440 kids in the school, so it really depends on how you look at it, because if you assume that all of the other labs are full, that's going to take up 130 students or so, so you'd subtract that out. So just say for last year, down to 300, and then you have 90 devices.
Close to a 2 to 1.
That's actually not...too bad.
And not everybody wants it.
It's at the same time.
At the same time. That's why we're trying to work around.
And the thing is, I like to grow it, this is me selfishly, there's something to be said for incremental growth, because what's happened, when we talk about problems that one-to-one districts have had, and even places like colleges, if you...once your students hit there, they're going to tell you how bad the internet is.
You have all that sparring down.
And that is because it has to grow together. You have to have what's going on in the background to support the devices you want to bring in. Because one thing I have learned is the manufacturers of wireless technology estimate on the high end. I don't know who they think is getting 25 connections out of these things, but I can tell you, 22.
Yeah.
Student number 23 not getting on, forget about 24 and 25. So we've had to make some adjustments.
Double up, yeah, double up in some moves.
So that's the capacity of the connection.
Like, one, so like if you see it-
See that little Wi-Fi box up there?
There's two of them in here.
So if we added a third one, then-
Right.
22 more people will be able to get on.
Right, so when you-
But the manufacturer says 25 in there, right?
So that's an issue now.
We've been managing it, so you'll see that there are wireless access points in the budget, and that's to go with the more wireless devices you add in, you have to have it on the backend. And there's also a project in there in the technology line to bring some equipment up from Town Hall, so that we can better shape the traffic here. So for example, teachers might get X amount of bandwidth, our high school students might get so much band, and we can better shape that using some newer tools that are out there.
Are the labs hardwired?
And save money, so it's all good.
Are the labs hardwired, or are they wireless also?
They're all hardwired.
Hardwired.
Yeah. We wire them all.
Yeah, we're still wired.
Any more questions for Beth?
Thank you.
Thank you. See, that's what happens when you have to pick them up.
Nina told me she would be captain of the department.
Anything else on technology?
Come on down.
Technology?
No. Very good info, though. We didn't have to address that, though.
Curriculum and ELO.
And she's also testing, right?
Yeah, there's a little bit of testing money in there.
Testing the ELO?
Yep.
Yeah.
I've had no questions on it.
This is same stuff.
A lot of copy paper.
And testing?
It's all good.
No, actually, I will ask you a question, Dr. Colley. If I'm recalling correctly, last year, there were some testing that we wanted to do, but we really didn't have to, we wanted to get ahead of the ball, the curve there. Is that...do you remember what I was...
It's the PARC assessments. That's basically what Beth is talking about, because the PARC assessments, the way we're looking at them as they, you know, have workshops and conferences to talk about what they look like, they're mostly online, which is good in some ways, because the students sit, they do the test, and in a quick turnaround time, you get some feedback. They're more aligned with the new frameworks, the Common Core, but on the flip side-
So, that's an issue now.
We, we've been managing it, so you'll see that there are wireless access points in the budget. And that's to go with the more, the more wireless devices you, you add in, you have to have it on the backend. And there's also a project in there in the technology line to bring some equipment up from town hall so that we can better shape the traffic here. So, for example, teachers might get X amount of bandwidth, our high school students might get so much band, and we can better shape that using some newer tools that are out there.
Are the labs hardwired?
And save money, so it's all good.
Are the labs hardwired or are they wireless also?
They're all hardwired.
Hardwired.
Yeah. We, we wire them off.
We're still wired.
Any more questions for Beth?
Thank you.
We need something.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See, that's what happens when you want to pick it up.
Nina told me she wouldn't be counting without all her other.
Anything else on, um...
Come on down.
Technology?
No. Very good info, though. We didn't have to address that, though.
Curriculum and ELO.
And she's also testing, right?
Yeah, there's a little bit of testing money in there.
Testing the ELO?
Yep.
Yeah.
I've had no questions on it.
This is same stuff.
A lot of copy paper.
Any on testing?
It's all good. No, actually, we'll ask you a question, Dr. Colley. If I'm recalling correctly, last year there were some tests in that we were wanting to do, but we really didn't have to, we wanted to get ahead of the ball, the curve there. Is that, do you remember what I was...
It's the PARC assessments. That's basically what Beth is talking about because the PARC assessments, the way we're looking at them as they, you know, have workshops and conferences to talk about what they look like, they're mostly online, which is good in some ways because the students sit, they do the test, and in a quick turnaround time you get some feedback. They're more aligned with the, the new frameworks, the Common Core. But on the flip side, our, and I'm telling you, all schools across the Commonwealth are a little worried about this because I think every school district is going to face either in more or less capacity, the discussion we just had.
Bless you.
That, yes, we, we've actually tried to stay on top in the last couple of years, the infusion that we put into technology puts us in a place where, I'm not going to hit the panic button yet, but we're going to have situations where it's going to be a scheduling nightmare if we just have what we have once the PARC comes online, just to get every kid with enough time in front of the computer to do the test. It'll be one of those where, you know, two classrooms from grade four have the library, you know, the, the lab available to them for an hour and a half, and then the next classroom goes in for an hour and a half, and the next two classrooms go in for an hour and a half, and then third grade, second grade, first grade. They're saying they're, they want to provide it all the way down to first grade? Which I, electronics starting at grade three.
Yeah, this, this testing I was thinking of wasn't the PARC. This was something that we wanted to, we were doing it, we were paying for some type of testing that we, we wanted to do. We didn't have to. I'm just wondering if we have done that or not.
Oh, the Iowa, the Iowa, we stopped.
Okay.
We're not doing it because we're not getting any different information. In other words, the kids that the Iowa flags, we've already flagged with our own internal, so it doesn't make any sense to keep doing that.
And it was an expensive thing that we...
Yeah.
Transportation. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael.
I'm keeping a low profile over here.
You are keeping a low profile.
Don't miss my hand. I think this might be the appropriate area for me to address is testing. We've had conversations, Dr. Colley, in the past about framing a program that identifies gifted and talented students. In many schools, it's done in the later elementary years, some the early middle school years. I know one option is where a student, I think it's in seventh grade, takes the PSAT. And depending on how they do, sometimes that is interpreted as, as one guide, but I know there's many other options. Typically, when we've had the conversation, the concern has been budgetary. So, now that we're going over the testing section of our budget, is there any way that we, or would this fit into the guidance area? I'd like to see a way to identify students with exceptional skills at a very early age. I know Fall River, by the time they're in middle school, there, there's many that have been identified and in fact are eligible for a specialized program at the Talbot School for gifted and talented students. And in fact, our students may be eligible to, to transfer there under school choice. But do we have any mechanism in place now for identifying gifted and talented students?
Well, certainly our testing will point to the students who have facility in certain areas, whether it be math, reading, language arts. My concern is more, as, as you pointed out, you can identify those students who have high capacity. If you're going to build a program around just those students, philosophically it does two things. One, it segregates those students, at least for part of the day, to participate in that type of a program, which is not something that at least we have entertained as a, as a school district. And at the same time, when you do that, the issue becomes, when you add a program, you may have to either shift resources or add resources in order to have that additional program. So, if the program is in addition to what you have, then it's an additional expense. If it's in place of something like, say, we create one classroom of third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade that deals with the, the students who are at the high end of the academic spectrum, and you segregate them, you, you could do it that way with some minimal expense, like in training, additional resources. But then you deprive the rest of the student population from having those students participating in the classroom and sharing in their experience.
If I can just follow up, I appreciate that input. Primarily what I'm looking for is, yes, additional to, would this be the budget it goes on? So, if that's, if we had an additional gifted and talented testing, would it fit into this budget? That was what the question was. So, I'm going to put a note that that, like I have many other notes, things that I or Tony have suggested we add or have questions on, and I, I'm putting down here that I've got a suggestion to look at the gifted and talented testing.
Yep.
Let's test them, let's see if we have any true, beyond high on the spectrum. If there's groups of students that are beyond the spectrum, then we need to address that. Whether we have our own program, I tend to consider that, you know, what you said, we, we don't have, but we do have AP programs with fourteen, fifteen students in a class at the high school. So, we, we do have some programs that segregate students from the entire population. But I, I, I have always, and annually we have this conversation, believe that, that we have an obligation as best we can to identify students, and I think it happens in that, that elementary to middle school. So, I'll put a note here that I'll follow up and see what kind of expenses that might be, and that's where we'd go. I don't, the whole program, I guess we'd have to send, you know, look at that separately.
They're just thinking about testing.
Yeah, just the identification.
We did have a student last year test out of eighth grade and enter Conley in the eighth grade.
I think it was two.
I know at least one personally that tested out of eighth grade and entered Conley early.
There's a boy and a girl?
Mm-hmm.
Into their early, what, they have a program now?
I don't know what it's called, I don't know if they have to go five years of high school, whether it's four.
They do, they still go, their senior year is still at the same time our senior year for our students to be, but they do more project work? From what I understand.
Five years of tuition instead.
Yeah.
Instead of four.
Transportation.
Yes.
Tony?
Dr. Colley, uh, line thirty-one. Regular transportation at four eighty-eight. That's the, page twenty-six.
Which line?
Thirty-one.
Yep. Contracted services?
Yeah, the contracted, the forty-eight, that's, that's the contractual increase from the four forty-four. That's just the, the flat, that's, that's their thirty-year contract.
Yes. Dr. Colley, with your projec- projected admission totals and enrollment totals, I've looked at some of the buses, they seem to be low ridership. Are we projecting it all going down to maybe fifteen buses next year?
The only way to do that and...
Since we have a nice new program that does all that.
Uh, we can, it just would, it, it would depend what grade level you would do it at. Because then the only place you could really, no, you still have to do it there. You could do that, it would force consolidation of even more bus stops. But a huge number, but some.
I know, some buses seem like they have like less than ten kids on it, to where I know we went from forty-five or sixty passenger buses down to short ones.
There are a couple...
They even do it in a van.
Yeah, there are a couple, well, the, the problem is, you have a very, very big town, and there's a couple, particularly the ones that go over to the, the Little Compton side, actually, where by the time the bus gets down there, picks up a couple of kids, they'll pick up a few on the way back, but because it takes such a long time to get there and back here, the kids would be on the bus for a long period of time if we try to pick up additional kids, be on the one hour.
I think, right?
Yeah, be on the one hour.
I'm sure Michelle tweaks that program and runs different scenarios and...
Michael?
Yeah, I'll, I'll also limit my discussion to the transportation area. And in particular, reflecting on Mr. Larabee's comment, although we can't opt for other services to transport students, if those ten students are on that far end and really don't want to be on the bus for the hour and a half until they, they, or how much time it takes for the route, if they wanted to hire their own van service, that's an option, correct?
I'm assuming yes.
And, and so what I'd like to see is our sharing alternative transportation options with parents. I'd like to see that at the high school, or whatever the stops are, as you mentioned, down the harbor. It, it may be, if they pooled their two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student, they may be able to hire a van to go pick them all up and get here in, in twenty minutes instead of...
Instead of an hour.
The routing.
For the first month.
And, and then second, and then secondly, that information also at the, at the pre-K level, that although we, we don't get involved in pre-K transportation, there is some, some bonded school student transportation companies that would be willing to put a twelve-person van on the road to, to satisfy some of these needs. I'm not suggesting they would go through our budget because they can't, because we have a contract. But I, I do think that if concerns come up through our office, the office of the superintendent and the transportation department, that, that perhaps there's a way to solve some of the concerns, whether they be the, the long time on the bus or not being able to take advantage of the pre-K program because of transportation.
I have to say, just as an aside comment, I don't know many pre-K parents who'd put their three-year-old on a bus. They don't even want to leave them at school, the parents are crying. It'd be interesting if you put them on a bus.
Dr. Colley, is it, is it only the, I noticed a few years, we've always cut checks to individual families that have driven their children to school. Is that only special ed that is taking advantage of that wherever cents per mile to bring their kid to school every day?
And usually, yeah, in, in many cases are, where we're sending the kids long distances and the parents have chosen to take that time to be with their kids and they would prefer to get reimbursed.
Anything else on transportation?
When will we start, just, when will we start the whole transportation? I think it's next year.
We've got another year, yeah.
Next year.
Got a whole new year of it.
Onto sped.
Oh, no, I, I get a, one more transportation question. We've got a kind of, I guess it is the same amount budgeted for the homeless transportation. Is that above and beyond the reimbursement that the state provides, or is this total? I know there's, there's, because again, you don't know how much the state's going to come up with because, but you have to, you have to take that stab at these figures. That's what a budget is. But, so on the homeless transportation contracted services, is that the total we spend?
We are basically lowballing it. It may be a little bit more. If you look at the eight, seven oh three, but you go all the way back to even twenty-ten, it was about nine thousand. Our hope is that we're now coming out of, well, completely coming out of the recession, but my hope is there's not as many people who...
All right, but my, my question actually is, is that a hundred percent, projected at a hundred percent? Or does it get matched up with reimbursement?
It's, it's matched up with reimbursement, but it's, we're not projecting a, a lot of money because of the uncertainty. It becomes, well, that's one of the ones that becomes a political football.
Dr. Colley, what is electricity for speed limit signs? Is that the thing the police department puts out on the road? Or is that our little, little thing that we have out here? That's not running on solar, is that a little solar panel on top of that?
Not that I know of.
No.
We should go.
That's a separate line item?
What speed limit sign?
They, they make us pay for...
All those highway signs are all solar, now we should get some of those little signs out there.
What speed limit sign?
If we, if we go and change that, they'll make us pay for it originally.
I, I don't even know where the speed limit sign is.
Oh, the school's, the school's...
The lights.
School zone.
Oh, the blinking light.
Yeah.
Oh, not, it's not, oh, gotcha.
They have a meter.
Yeah.
Bing, bing, bing.
Um, all right, onto the sped. This is where we have the summer school sped in here and...
Additional, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
One fifty?
Michelle, I've only got one hundred and fifty.
Yep. I'm not asking any questions.
I'm cutting down to part-time here. Short-term is disease. Don't put that in there.
So, we're at page thirty or twenty-eight?
Uh, there's a bunch of them.
Says twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
So, we're at a point where we're, we're looking at a ten percent increase from three million, three hundred thousand to three million, six hundred thousand. I also have a prior engagement. Two of the members have to move on. Would it make sense for us to continue this discussion?
Charlie?
I can't be here Wednesday. I have a prior commitment that I, I can't be here, so I would prefer to wrap up the budget today.
Is this the last one?
Yeah.
This is it?
Yeah, this is it.
Yeah, this is it. It also happens to be the largest segment, and it's a three million, six hundred thousand dollar budget. So, without, well, you have to leave first.
Can I just make a comment on this?
Yes, Eric.
With the uncertainty of a sped budget, not knowing what students we may get, may leave, I think we have two in arbitration.
Right, that's a hundred and...
I mean, we could sit here and beat our heads against the wall and find out tomorrow it's totally different. Not that I want to run out the door, but it's, we could pick this thing apart.
There's not much.
Get down to a penny and it's going to change tomorrow. This has to be our best guess estimate, and when we do end up with surplus at the end of the year, it's usually because of this. We've brought kids back into district and that's where we realize savings and we pass them on and...
And this includes those uncertain, those ones that we are thinking we may have to be responsible for next year.
One question, though, that may help everybody at the table. What have you, off the top of your head, buffered for yourself and for those what-ifs?
Just the one.
So, you've only buffered for one extra student, not like two, just in case maybe two kids are coming into district or a foster family takes in a kid and we're responsible?
No, we, we did not buffer that much.
I think we used the two hundred prepaid to...
So, we have a, we have a two hundred, little bit of a buffer, plus an extra student buffer?
No, 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 last...
You know, we never had a line item called buffer. I'd be very cautious to talk about, we used a two hundred thousand dollar buffer. We never did, we never had it on, you know, that again is...
Prepayment.
Right, it's the prepaid.
It's prepaid.
It's transparent.
You used the word buffer, it's the prepaid.
Okay, so that's...
Because you do have to have some, I understand what Michael's saying, we don't want, we want to be...
No, it's perception.
But, yeah, you can kill your budget with one or two kids coming into the district, you've, you've got a plan for it. I would just, my question was, what would you use for a plan?
Right, the issue right now is that in this year, when we took out the prepaid to reduce last year's requests, it left us in a hole in the sense that those kids that we don't have now the money to prepay, or if we don't use the money to prepay, we use it for other things, then those kids continue into next year. Those we know we're paying for. So, if we take the two hundred and don't use it as a prepaid, then next year's out-of-district placement will go up by two hundred thousand, on top of the one fifty, that, and again, that's my only, and it's not even a buffer. It's the one case where we have parents who have expressed a concern that they would like to go elsewhere. So, we kind of know that that family exists. This is not, I'm not adding additional money, it's just in the case that we're not, we haven't done that.
But just so the public knows, if we have a student that's in district, it's about forty thousand dollars if we use our own services. And if we have to send a kid out, it's usually about a hundred and fifty. Is that a good?
Yeah, usually, it, it depends what, what program they go to. Most of our programs, if they're in a public school, like you have at least one collaborative program, that's about twenty-six, but the transportation is another twenty-six, so that's the forty-some thousand dollars. If they go to a private facility, usually the tuition jumps to about forty-five. Add on top of that the transportation of the twenty-twenty-five, and if they go any further than, you know, maybe an hour, then you're talking, usually those are more involved cases, or the families want to go into those more involved facilities, that's where you get into the hundred and fifty. That's where you get into the hundred and fifty.
Michael?
Uh, just looking at, at, uh, where the increases are coming from, uh, we do see the, uh, the additional position sped supervisor system-wide. Uh, I think it's worth pointing out that, that some of those responsibilities have been picked up. Uh, I, I, I wonder from where, but I saw a reduction in teaching assistance, but that, those wouldn't fill that gap. There wa- it was, e- two years ago, there was, there was onsite sped clerical or something. Is, is that been eliminated?
No, supervisors. And there was, there was additional clerical support in each of the buildings that has not been restored. So for example, the middle school and the high school-
The non-classroom activities was done at each school, but some of that's being picked up here. In other words, a sped supervisor would be considered instructional in terms of, they're, they're working with the classroom setting. Was there not some duties in the office, if you will, that there was a clerk? They, they weren't a department supervisor, they were clerical.
Point twos.
Was that eliminated and is that where this comes from?
Clerical was reduced to fifty percent in each of the three buildings.
So that's down here?
That was a couple of years ago. Uh, let me see. Support services clerical. Actually, it's been quite a while now. Forgot. So that's been reduced. So we have a secretary that covers both high school and middle school. One that cover, covers the elementary school and curriculum office the other half the time. And then we have a jack-of-all-trades at the MAC, uh, that has the responsibility also doing the clerical work. What we did add was the, um, sped supervisors. We're using that money, again, transferring it out of those supervisory's point twos in each of the buildings to actually fund partially.
Then, my question is addressing the seventy-five thousand dollars for this year. Any of those responsibilities being picked up from other budgets? I don't, I don't see that. I thought it was supposed to be under clerical.
If, no, if you look at the-
Otherwise we have an expansion of the seventy-five thousand.
No, if you look at the, um, sped supervisor west point two, middle school point two lines twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Those have been moved up there. We're taking them out this year because we're doing their transfer because that was agreed to and then-
So that just didn't work at the school level?
That was, that was part of the argument that the, um, the state, when they came down to do the comprehensive program review, said that that was not an appropriate way of supervising sped and doing the IB chair responsibilities.
Anything else on sped?
I must excuse myself.
Um, before you go, any thoughts on this budget total?
We move that we accept the superintendent administrative education budget and move it forward to the FinCom.
Are you going to move it to the FinCom?
No, to our school committee budget. We have to approve it as a school committee budget. We accept his, then we hag a little bit and we present the school committee budget.
Do you want us to accept this as it is?
We talked about that at the beginning of the meeting. We were going to do that Wednesday, so why are we going to, what are we going to?
Well, fees, he said, aren't going to affect us, the budget either.
I don't see it affecting the budget if all you want to do is reduce the fees and reduce the balances.
Michelle, can I?
Right, so, but we need to put that in.
Does she have a second?
Go ahead. Can I just ask for clarification? When are we going to the FinCom?
We haven't set a date. We haven't set a date because I'm waiting to see if we're going to add, subtract, wiggle these.
Is there any, is there anything that is going to be suggested to the superintendent? Adjustments to this budget, major adjustments that are-
Yes.
I think you had some early that mentioned gifted and-
We'll list them tonight and I think we took notes.
Yeah, but I'm, as of right now, any suggestions to him?
The fees, so what?
That's Wednesday, Tony.
The fees are not in this budget.
On, on Wednesday.
They might have some effect on the budget though.
Okay, but we're going to put that, we're going to change-
I have notes of fif-
I'm just asking if you have anything to suggest to him tonight, that's all. I'm not, that's all I'm, I'm asking.
We have a motion to accept what's here or not.
Yeah, but it hasn't been seconded.
Sort of the sake of arguments. Declare it as died on the table, then. You can't-
You have to, the only way we can talk about it is a second.
You can't discuss a motion.
I think Eric just seconded.
You have to have, you have to have a second to talk. We always second motions, so I'll absolutely second it.
At this point, we've gone through it. Um, I think that the budget process that we discussed was that we, we, we need to have a starting base and then there's always the ability to revise and change and tweak. It's, we've been looking at budgets now for the past month and a half and we've been revising, changing and tweaking. I think we're at the point where this is relatively acceptable and there may be some shifting that needs to be done, but, I mean, we need to, in my opinion, have a yes base start so that we can move to the next step. We just keep reviewing and reviewing and reviewing and we can never get to the next step because we're still reviewing. So I'd like to be able to move to the next step. This is the superintendent's budget. I think that my motion is to accept it as he has presented it.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Michael?
I'd like to indicate that while this is, uh, a little different for us to actually go through the line items in the budget, uh, the motion on the table does not take into consideration the long list of input that we as a school committee had questions on and moved on beyond the questions. And now we're trying to, the, the, the motion on the floor is, is to accept this budget as a document. It, it needs some work. It's, we've accepted it. Uh, there, there's a long list of things that I, I can't come up with recommendations without the projected enrollment figures. I think I made that clear before. There's some other, it, there's a long list of things that, that we've, we've asked here and looking for more detail to continue the conversation. Not, not to mention, there is a, uh, sequential calendar that, that the superintendent, uh, put out that has a few more steps for the budget subcommittee to look at. So, so I, I suggest we follow what the superintendent's, uh, suggestion was at the beginning of this process rather than changing midstream.
Karen?
Again, this is, let's move it to the next step. Let's accept what he's presented and go to the next step. We're not adopting it as our school committee budget.
I think that's where the problem is. We're not accepting it as a final document. We're just, we're acknowledging that we received his budget.
Read the motion back.
Oh, you said something about-
No, I said motion to approve the budget that, I, I withdraw the FinCom piece to, that the superintendent has presented. That's what I said. I'm not going to be here Wednesday, so I don't know what's going to happen, so I guess you guys can move to the next step without me. I, I just, I don't, I don't know what more tweaking. We've been tweaking for almost two months now. I've seen these budgets. It's been revised. We've talked about it. I've heard it. I've seen what the wants were. I've seen what we've withdrawn. I've seen what was put towards, that is going to be dealt with on Wednesday. What was put towards this year that was able to be taken out of potentially next year budget so that we would reduce the original ask, which was a lot more than the seven seventy-seven that is being asked for now. I mean, I've looked at all the revisions, you know, the, the enrollment figures. I listen to them every month. We're not going to know what the final enrollment figure is until September starts. We're all doing projections at this point. That's what you always do.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, uh, but I'll hold off being the second unless-
Is there anybody else?
Someone else go first.
I thought we only had a second budget left.
No, if you want to go a second time, I'll, I'll wait in line rather than just-
Hold on, go ahead.
Okay. We've got a budget subcommittee that would like to look at it. We've got some questions put forward by all of us that, that are unanswered, including, I might add, the representative from the FinCom who was able to spend some time with us today. Taking any action on this budget this evening is out of sequence with what was put before us. To change that sequence, it, it doesn't make sense. I, there's no action due this evening on that presentation.
It's on the action agenda.
Budget that was completed last Wednesday.
What's Wednesday's meaning for?
Oh, it's more budgets. It's more budget and we have the discussion of fees-
Trades.
On there and the transfers. Um, FY thirteen transfers, the, uh, budget. Oh, and, um, fees are revolving account.
I mean, I think Wednesday would be the day to approve it, to, to make that motion.
Well, I'm relatively content with the budget that is here. Um, I want to see the fees lowered. Um, I think that that's, we, we have to start chipping away. We definitely weren't able to do that last year, but I think we need to start doing it this year. You know, I'm content in accepting this as a living document that we keep tweaking and adjusting because certainly the Florida Selectmen, people are going to come back, FinCom, with questions and suggestions and thoughts that we may have to tweak even further. I'm prepared to accept it as a, as a living document and, uh, and then take a look at the fees and structures on Wednesday, which I feel very strongly about as I know a few others do as well. Um, but that's just my input.
Can we ask a question of Dr. Colley?
Yeah.
Where does he feel we are in this process?
I honestly, the, the part that I see next is, I'll go back and get some numbers for the few things that have been asked tonight, the part-time, um, the part-time business official, um, see if there would be some shift in the, the monies in that department, um, to offset some of the cost. The gifted and talented testing, um, I can provide the revenue projections, um, in terms of the accounts, which you will see, plus the reduction in fees.
He just says he's, he has to make revisions to it also, so we can just call it.
Um, all those in paper? Go ahead. Uh, no.
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 How many guys are waiting to read?
We thought you were asking who was waiting to read.
It was just a climatic.
You didn't say anything?
So what? You guys are all using your eye at the same time.
Is this you guys thing?
No, like everybody, as in all four of you. Everybody just answers at the same time.
I do need to, uh, my son's standing by himself out in the road.
We don't want that. No, please don't. Um, on to, um, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Wednesday, I'm sorry.
War and article.
Yeah, I was looking at Wednesday. Um, yes.
What's this, five o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, these are possible warrant articles that we have talked about, A, being the request for sped revolver account, um, that captures the sped revenue and Medicaid with a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar revolver account limit. Um, request capital needs article for PCB monitoring testing of vehicles, um, which is our vehicle that was hit by a tree.
And the van that we lost.
That's what I said. Oh, both of them. That's both of them.
Well, the tree vehicle should be fixed.
It, it may end up being fixed, but we still have a, basically a dead van or no dead van that's already been pulled away.
And then the request article to capture the end of year free cash for sped purposes, which would go into that revolver.
The only-
No?
No. There would be separate warrant articles.
No, I know that.
The, uh, the one thing, the, the request, uh, to capture free cash, um, would have to have a limit because since it's a revolving account, you have to specify the amount that you want to put in there, um, because eventually the town has to tally up all the revolving accounts and the town itself has a limit on how much they can put onto revolving accounts.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sped revenue Medicaid, that's what goes typically to the town?
Right.
Okay.
Well, the, the sped revenue is new. It's, um, basically our hiring out, our vision specialist where she's at other sites anyway.
Right.
She, uh-
And other people are using her services.
And they're sending us checks that-
Right.
Basically, at this point, will go into the general fund and fall out as, uh, free cash.
Okay.
The, the sped revolver, that one fifty?
Yes.
We're not putting that, we, we, we just want to ask to open the account and we're going to put the one fifty in? Well, we're asking for that.
As, as money comes in, the money goes into that account specifically for those purposes. So you have, so every quarter, we report-
That's not, we're not asking the town to give us one fifty?
Well, right now, they're getting some of that. They would get all of it if we didn't have a revolving account because I have checks sitting in the office and when I send them down, they're going to cash.
I got you, okay.
Michael?
Oh, originally I thought this account was going to be structured so that we would return funds that would be with the request to be put in that account. If we had a surplus in our sped budget for this year, then, that was the intent of the warrant article that I thought this was, was continuation of. You just spoke of, if I heard you correctly, we have staff that is being outsourced out of district and that we may have some revenue coming in. That's a policy shift that I'm not aware of, uh, and, and not in favor of. We've had discussion about it. But if I understood what you just said, that this account is tied to, uh, a service that we're offering outside our district, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, uh-
It's, it's similar to, uh-
So this has nothing to do then with the warrant article that we had legal opinion on last spring?
Well, the only legal opinion that we got was that nobody seems to know whether that is legal. I, I can't get anybody to-
We had a letter from, uh, from the attorney that, that was shared with us at a, at a town meeting regarding that, that request. Um, we reviewed it in, in an open school committee meeting that, that maybe it was a special meeting.
We had an internet, um, printout from another district that, it was a, their, it was actually a copy of their town meeting article. And that town did this.
Language that I wrote after having used that as a draft that we forwarded on for legal opinion. It was through a school committee meeting that I believe, uh, Superintendent Dargan was in attendance at and you weren't available on that day. And we sent it for legal and we, we got legal on that language that I submitted to, to this body. So now we've got on the agenda something that looks an awful lot like my discussion last spring and, and we're saying that we're going into the out, we're going into the services business for students outside the district. That's news to me. That's-
We've talked about that, yeah.
It's news to me that we would implement such a thing. We, we, I, I was strongly opposed to that, that, that we're now going to bring in students from outside the district and-
No, 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 no. We've talked about it here. That isn't what he said.
There, there- That is what he said.
No, whatever needs to-
There were two proposals that we put in front of the school committee through the special ed department. One was the possibility that if we have room in some of our special ed programs to allow students from other towns to tuition into our program, and again, if that ever were to happen, if, because we put it out there to other towns. They haven't taken advantage of that. But if that were the case, the check from the other town tuition would go nowhere but directly to the town general fund and because it's undesignated revenue, it'd go into free cash and then they could do whatever they want with it. However, at the same time, we have students who have, um, vision needs. We don't have enough vision needs for having the staff person that we were going to hire to work full-time. However, knowing that many of the local districts in the area have the same needs we do and the only way we have individually, each district, been able to approach providing those services, those vision needs, have been to contract- those vision needs, have been to contract out with a collaborative that charges over $150 an hour from the minute they leave the collaborative to travel to wherever the kids are at. We figured if we hire somebody, we save, number one, on not having to pay for that dead time of travel. And two, we save again because anytime we don't have that person working with our kids, we can sell off the time to additional... to other districts in the area so that they're paying, maybe instead of 150, they're paying about $90 an hour. But it comes to us to offset the money that we're paying.
Yeah, but I've heard the presentation before and when I said servicing students out of district, what I meant was they live out of district. They want to come here to our school and pay a tuition.
They're not coming here, though.
We have some students, for example... Got to be careful.
Whether they come here or we send someone out, they're going to be...
But there are kids...
I'm totally opposed to that presentation, which we've heard before. We haven't voted on. So I'm opposed to setting up an account to receive revenue from that type service because we haven't adopted it.
What about the...
What I was hoping to see was the warrant article that I asked to be put on tonight. This was my request, so if you could let me speak to it.
No, this wasn't your request, actually. This came from last week.
It was my request under new business last Wednesday.
We didn't have any requests under new business last week. Did we? Oh, we did? That was two weeks ago. We didn't have a meeting last week.
And that warrant article is already written. It was written last spring. It has legal opinion with it.
I don't remember getting a legal opinion from anybody on that. My memory is different. Carolina?
I remember reading a stream of emails from the town and the school. There was discourse with regards to a lot of questions as to under what authority, how you would structure it, what chapter it would be under, whether it had to be reauthorized on a yearly basis, whether you could roll over the money. And the reason that when we originally met, I voted against it was because there were all these questions that I didn't have the answers to. I have a little better understanding of the number-one article where you can create it. My understanding is, I don't know what the chapter is specific, 40-something, 447?
Forty-four, fifty-three.
Right. That you can create the revolving account, that it has to be reauthorized on a yearly basis. That means you have to go to town meeting floor every year and ask permission to continue the revolving account. That should really not be a problem. The major issue with this is that right now, all of the Medicaid reimbursements that come into the town go to the town. They do not come to the school, even though we are the one that are providing the services and actually getting the reimbursement. We don't get those monies because we don't have this account set up to put those monies into. So the check comes in, it goes to the town, and then we never see that money. This other piece of revenue that's happening, we've discussed it on more than one occasion, is we have a staff person that is not being utilized because all the services that our students here need are being handled and there's maybe five, 10 extra hours in the week that she's not working. So we are contracting her to another school so that she can provide services to that school's students.
Point of information, that's not on this agenda.
That's what we're talking about.
Just explain it to you, though.
The sped revenue.
The point is, that is not on the agenda.
Excuse me, I was talking.
You're talking about something not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda. It says sped revenue, right there. It says capture sped revenue.
We don't have any sped revenue. That's my point. You know that and I know that.
That is the sped revenue.
There is no sped revenue right now.
And for what it's worth, the only...
This is not...
For what it's worth, the only new business request was regarding safety. There was no new business request on this one.
So the revenue that's generated from the person providing sight vision services to a student in another school system, and that school system sends us a check because of the services we provided, that money has nowhere to go. We can't put it in our regular accounts. So that goes to the town. When it goes to the town, it goes into their general fund, as the superintendent said, and we don't have access to it.
We don't do that now.
Can I finish? I don't interrupt you. Can I finish, please? Mr. Sullivan, can I finish? When I finish, you can raise your hand and the chair can recognize you. I'm speaking now. You speak all the time. You don't stop speaking. Can you let me at least finish?
If you have a point to make.
Michael, at least be courteous, everybody.
I don't just start screaming at someone.
No, but you've done it before, but you're also interrupting.
I still have a question on the board of Dr. Colley. He didn't answer my question and I was interrupted.
You can ask your question and when she's done, I don't...
I already did ask the question.
What was your question?
Where's the warrant article that I wrote last spring? That's what was supposed to be on tonight.
Nobody... You did not request a warrant article for this week.
Two meetings ago.
We talked about it last week and it was not a new business request. We talked about whether or not that meeting was still on the table or not.
That's the question I have for Dr. Colley.
Now, I was not... Apparently, there was...
I don't have a question for you. I have a question for Dr. Colley.
Michael, I don't care.
Okay.
The three of you were at a meeting that was held at the town hall, a posted meeting at the town hall with the Board of Selectmen where that motion or that warrant article was taken off the table. And I believe it was a two-to-one vote. Because I looked into that.
It was postponed to the spring, according to the letter from the lawyer.
No, the article was taken off the table, two-to-one vote at a town meet... At a meeting at the town hall that was a posted meeting during the selectmen's meeting. And that was with the three of you present.
First of all, my question was not for you and you're out of line.
Well, I'm the chair, so...
Yeah, but I'm asking Dr. Colley a question. He doesn't seem to remember the legal letter that came after the warrant article was drafted. We paid for that legal opinion.
Dr. Colley, what was the legal letter?
The legal letter did not specify that that warrant article was an acceptable warrant article.
Mike, that's why we pulled it.
That's why we pulled it.
That's not correct. It suggested it be put in the spring, if you read it.
When we get to the spring, we'll talk about it.
These other ones, creating new revenue...
And what you suggested back then is not the same thing.
I know it's not. That's what I thought this was supposed to be. This has totally changed and we're talking about revenue.
Have you looked at this before tonight?
Sped revenue...
This came Wednesday.
Is something we don't have.
Do you need a motion for this?
We don't even track revenue.
We need a motion to be able to put these on. These are due... Any warrant articles are due to the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday. So if there is a desire to put...
Tuesday, tomorrow?
Tomorrow. If there is a desire to put any of these, any, all, or none on the warrant, we need to make a decision tonight. And Michael, you can always make another request tonight for another motion if you'd like to. Is there or is there not a motion to request a warrant article for a sped revolver account that captures sped revenue and Medicaid with a $150,000 revolver account limit?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Clearly, this has some additions. The language was reviewed by legal and now we don't have any language on this warrant article that we're voting on. And we're addressing... The comical piece of this is we're addressing revenue streams that we don't want to look at in our budget document. So here we are, creating new streams of revenue that we don't consider part of our responsibility at the budget table.
We don't get these revenues.
I speak strongly opposed to this article, the way it's outlined without text.
The problem with this is you can gamble and decide that you're going to not add money to the operating budget in the hopes that you will get the revolving account and that way pay for things like that additional sped reimbursement or sped tuition cost. That's something we can decide to do or not to do. The actual wording of the articles from talking to Mr. Healy, he does not need, or they do not need, at this very moment in time, the specific legalese wording because what they need is just a placeholder with how much money you think you're going to need or where it's going to come from or where is it going to go to. And then they'll have their lawyer craft the actual language of that warrant article.
Any other discussion?
Sped revenue, do you consider Circuit Breaker part of that?
Circuit Breaker is a separate account already created by statute, so this...
Correct. But do you consider the revenues coming from Circuit Breaker eligible to be deposited in this account?
No, because Circuit Breaker is a specific reimbursement account created by law for revenues... for reimbursements from the state directly for out-of-district tuition.
So my question remains, to date, how much sped revenue has been generated?
About $16,000. And for Medicaid, it's anywhere between 120,000 to 80,000 the previous year.
My question is on sped revenue. $16,000 is generated for this year.
Right about now, that's what we're projecting, yes.
From billing out...
Yes.
For people that we hire to people that don't live in our district.
Yes.
And we've just started doing that this year.
I believe so.
And it's something we never did before.
Nope.
And it's an unauthorized service that I wasn't aware we were doing. So that's my point. I don't know how more clear to make it. We never did bring that business.
I was aware we were doing it.
It's... I was... So again, I think we should stay in the business of improving student attainment, not outsourcing services.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I think we have a prior for these special meetings that stop on Wednesdays.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to... I don't know what.
The second one.
I don't know if that was a yes or no.
It was no.
Or an abstain.
Dr. Colley, on the capital, the monitoring...
We...
That came in at...
Thirty-five thousand a year? That was for three quarters, so I don't know. The quarter's probably around 50.
And then to replace the vehicle that is out of commission, permanently out of commission?
That one, the van.
I'm not talking about the truck, the van.
No, the van could be anywhere between 20,000, 25,000. The other problem is, I think our oldest truck that basically dropped the plow this last time because it's so rusted, the bolts...
Is that the red one?
I think it's the red one. All I know is it's like 15, 20 years old. That one will go next. I mean, it'll get to the point like the van where, you know, you take it to get it inspected.
I move that we approve the second warrant.
Second discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm just looking for that.
Explain that third one again.
Mr. Sullivan had, and I'll go from some of the notes from the previous meetings.
This is sort of more the article that he wanted to have put on.
Right. And...
But he walked out before hearing it.
Basically, I recall, the idea last year, early this year...
To capture the end-of-year free cash.
Was to be able to have an account where you could put sped savings and there was a million questions, so we said...
You can't do it.
It was taken off the table at a town hall meeting that you guys...
And I've asked a couple of times and nobody can tell me how to create it.
There's no authority to do it because it's trying to circumvent the system. And so there is no authority...
I just saw that I'm clear, okay.
That we found and that's what all the...
All right, I'm sorry.
Back and forth was...
But I was, you know, I was doing what he asked, which is put it back on the agenda. The worst that could happen is we bring it to the town. Town council looks at it and they're going to have to put the wording on the other two articles anyway so they can look to see if there's a way to...
All right, so when you say capture the free cash from sped, what...
Well, that's what his idea was.
No, no, for sped, not from.
For sped, sorry.
So the end-of-year free cash would be put into an account and used only for...
Only for sped in the following fiscal year.
It's not from sped.
Isn't that what we tried to do?
That's what we were talking...
Yeah, but there was a million questions, so I don't...
Right.
But he asked to put it back on, so we put it back on. Much as he argues with me that I don't put things on that he asks for, they do get on here.
But if there's no avenue to do that...
Right.
Well, if we put it on, the worst that could happen is the town council does some more research and either says yes...
Now, we could pull these off before town meeting.
Right. Can I just say, my concern is that, I mean, I've looked at the authorizations and to me, this is clearly a workaround of trying to get free cash into a different place, which the state's not going to let you do. And to send it forward sends a message that we think this is realistic. And I don't think this is realistic and I don't want to send that message to the Board of Selectmen personally.
My concern with putting it out there, I don't... My recollection is very different than Michael's. I remember we had a meeting right here. You were not present. And at the very last minute, we were up against a wire on putting an article on and he made a request, Michael made a request, or he sent some language saying that he had found it somewhere and...
Another town did it.
Another town that did it. And he found the town meeting language from the warrant article and didn't really get definitive answers from town council, from our council, who kind of said, "Well, yeah, it looks like that school's doing it, but it doesn't quite look right to me."
That's right.
So we didn't really get a definitive, but it was voted four-to-one anyway.
I voted against it.
And then it was brought back to town at a meeting at the town hall. You guys got more information. As well as this went to the selectmen who were like, "This doesn't even look like you can do that." And then it was...
And that's why we withdrew...
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn before...
So my concern with putting this forward and not having a good definitive answer from our attorney is it may make us look foolish.
And we're still in the winter, so we've got a few weeks before spring.
No, they need a placeholder now.
No, I'm saying...
They would need it, right, for...
I've looked at it. I read the memos. I looked at the line. That's why I voted against it when we originally had that discussion, actually, in one of those rooms over there. Because I didn't have enough information. It was too nebulous for me. And after everything I've looked at, I don't think we can do this. And I really do not feel comfortable sending it to the Board of Selectmen to start this chain of emails once again that happened last year.
And if I understand all correctly, the 200,000 that was referenced earlier that we can allow for prepayment or into the next year, that sort of accounts for the fact that they don't want you to do this, but they're allowing you to at least do some prepayment.
That's basic... That is basically what the... What one of the councils did indicate, that you do have the mechanism.
They've set it up that way. To do it that way, instead of doing it as an account. The thought process... And it's a good thought process behind what he wants to do is, well, you can take that money and buy equipment that you might need in the special ed rooms or whatever. And I agree. I wish there was a mechanism to be able to do that, but I'm not feeling warm and fuzzy about just throwing it out there. We really don't have a good, solid... This is a doable.
Well, if you're going to go to town meeting and ask for a revolving account to put money, you know, end-of-the-year savings into it, it's no different than going back in the fall or the following spring, special before the annual, and asking for some of the money out of free cash to go to fund something, I don't know.
And if you think you're going to have that much every year, then we're going to give you less.
This year, we won't have that amount because if we use it for prepayment, it won't be there.
There's no motion. Okay, hold on, let me go back. So is there a motion on that one, for the record?